We have some more chairs up front, so don't be shy. Come on up. And lots of chairs. We appreciate everybody trying to find a seat. All right, so Happy New Year, everyone. And we'll go ahead and start and call to order the Metropolitan Planning Commission January 12, 2023 meeting. Appreciate everybody coming down. Before we get started, just a few announcements. If, as a reminder, if everyone would please silent your phones, so there's not any disruptions for when folks are talking. And we appreciate that. Next, two commissioners, I do want to remind you, our friendly IT guys say these mics are very sensitive. And so I think last meeting, we had a few times we had to reset the mics. So just go really slow and be gentle. And I think it will be, the IT guy will love us forever if we do that. So that's all I got as far as announcements. So first, next is the adoption of the agenda. And commissioners, the agenda was sent prior to the meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. Next is item C, which is the approval of the December 8, 2022 minutes. And so also, those were sent out prior to the meeting as well and posted. Is there a motion to adopt?
Okay.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and the minutes are adopted. Next is the item D, which is the recognition of the council members. And we just go in order of when we see folks come in. I saw Councilmember Nash. Where's he at? Councilmember Nash. Let me make sure. Oh, Councilmember Nash, you're back there. Do you want to come up now or later? Okay. Well, thank you for coming. We appreciate it. Happy New Year. Councilwoman Benedict, where are you? There you are. There you are. Come up right there and just turn the mic on. Thank you for coming down. Welcome. Up, you gotta turn, let's get your microphone on here.
Thank you.
There we go.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Appreciate all of your work. I don't have the case number in front of me, but this is in regards to the Gleaves Farm property in District 15. I represent, on District 7, the area that, which I represent is, the Brushhill roadside is within 1,000 feet of this. And this is going to, I've met with the community there and have some comments. I believe that they're going to be here to speak and that you likely received some emails in opposition to this development or communication in regards to this development. I have been in touch, well, actually, the developer met with the community, with District 7 members, a couple of months ago. During the time, I believe that they had made the application and they planned, they were working with the department to make changes to the plan. They did make some of those changes. Some of the concerns that my community had were noise, the views, flooding events in the area. And so, and then, you know, vegetation and what would be cut down in order to make the RV park. It's a luxury RV park is what's being put in. And that luxury RV park is going to, well, the applicant will explain what it is. So I just wanted to let you know that my community stands, you know, most of the people in that community meeting were in opposition to this. I do recognize that this is across the river from them. And so they don't, you know, this is, this is their view. And it's a view that they've enjoyed for many years. And it's a very serene, gorgeous view. So I understand their concerns. However, I also understand this is private property and that the owner is allowed to do with it, that which they'd like to do. And I do think that this is one of the least invasive uses as it relates to development. I think that there's more development that could be done in this location other than an RV park. There are concerns about flooding in the area because this area is, I believe, part of it is in a flood zone. So the development does have, they have addressed that. But, you know, I hope that you'll really take that into consideration as you review the case. They did come back to me and let me know that they are adding in additional trees and vegetation. Those will be native species that provide additional screening. And that is, that is the result of the meeting with my community here in District 7. So with that, I just ask that you take all of that into consideration as you review this to see and make sure that whatever plans, should they get approved? And I think that you'll probably approve them based on planning's feedback, that whatever plans that you review are adapted to be as least invasive as possible for the residents on Brushhill Road. So with that, that concludes my comments. Thank you, as always, for your service.
Thank you, Council lady. And the item is item 27 for everybody.
Cool. Thank you. Then do you have any questions for me? We're good.
Nope, not right now, but we might when.
I'm not going to be sticking around. I've got another commitment that I can't, can't miss.
Any questions for the Council lady? Nope. Okay. Thank you, Council lady.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. And then I saw Council Lady Hauser. Where's she at? I saw her. Council Lady Hauser. Council Lady Hauser, you can, would you like to come up? I want to make sure. Welcome.
All right. Hello. Glad to see you all here today, out of the rain outside. I'm going to just speak on item number 24. It's the Tailgate Brewery. This is a very small change to the SP. They're simply, they now brew beer. It's allowing them to also operate distilled products. So it's simply a product change that was not mentioned in the original SP. But there is no change to the footprint, to the traffic, to noise, to, to anything. Nothing's changed, other than we just added one product to the SP that was not listed originally. We did hold a public meeting. One person showed up and they were just curious. So there has been no community opposition to this. And so I just wanted to voice my approval for item 24, the Tailgate Brewery SP change. Thank you.
Thank you, Council lady. And that item for the commissioners in public was item number 24. Thank you, Council lady. All right. Next, I saw Councilmember Tooms. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I'm still on the Happy New Year, everybody.
For like the first couple of weeks, you can keep saying Happy New Year. All right. So I have items 35, 37, and 40. And I believe they may all be on consent. For 37 and 40, I don't expect there to be any opposition. I had community meetings for both of those projects. 2106 Buena Vista is just a small restaurant, walk-up restaurant. And it's always been a commercial property. 1211 Brick Church Pike, item number 40. There's a lot of community interest in modernizing that intersection of Brick Church Pike and Fern. The historical overlay, item number 35, the Lathan Court Youngs Lane. The residents of Lathan Court are very excited about that overlay. I'm in full support. I know there was some concern from one neighbor on Youngs Lane. But if you're familiar with the Youngs Lane area, that's where American Baptist College butts up to it. There's the Riverside Seventh Day Adventist Church. That's where the old Riverside Hospital is. There's a lot of history in that area. And so as councilperson, it's been very important for me to preserve historic areas and establish neighborhoods. And so this is one way to do that, to support these neighbors in their quest for historic overlay. There's also a text amendment, item number 18. And I do want to speak in support of that. And because I saw that it was on public hearing, and I may not have the opportunity to stay. But there was an instance in my district where there was an industrial property that because of some, some birding, they were allowed to build residential. And so now it's a massive apartment complex, to the surprise of myself and my constituents. And so rather than having that situation occur again, if this is changed, we're doing something, going from IWD to residential would be a special exception. I think that it would prevent situations like that from happening in the future. That's more fair to neighbors. And it helps to make sure that any projects coming in are actually fit, fit the neighborhood. And I believe that is all my items. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council lady. Appreciate it. Next, I saw Councilman Parker.
Hey, good afternoon, commissioners. Thank y'all, as always, for being here. I've got, I think, three things on the agenda. One is a, one that we're hoping to defer on Luton Street. It had a staff recommendation of disapproval. So we're going to see if there's any more work that can be done to get staff to a place that we're comfortable with that. I believe the applicant has requested a deferral. I'm not sure. The two items are associated with the Lincoln Tech redevelopment at Douglas and Gallatin. This is a project that we've been talking about in my district for several months now. The team has done a really good job of engaging with the community and getting a lot of support for that. So I think it's a fantastic project. It involves a lot of off-site improvements and has a lot of support in the community. So I do ask y'all some consideration on that and approval for that. So there's also an associated institutional overlay that's requested cancellation, that's over the property now. And that's recommended for approval by staff if the SP is approved as well. So I'm also supportive of that. And I'm going to try to hang around for it, but I saw a really full room. So in case I get, there's a long hearing ahead of that, I might have to slip out. But thank y'all again for being here this afternoon and for all your service.
Thank you, Councilman. I saw Councilman Dale. Try to keep track of everybody. It's hard. Welcome, Councilman.
Hello. Happy New Year to everyone.
Happy New Year.
Haven't seen you guys in a while. All right. So I'm here for 2820B. It's the El Dorado Motel. Not sure if you all are familiar with that and the historic nature of it. This is a project we've been working through. We have several community meetings over the last several months to discuss it with communities. We've, I think we've been able to get everybody on the same page. Everyone's excited. Really neat that the developer is looking to pay homage to the El Dorado with the design of the, of their building. And also to keep the sign and refurbish the sign and move it up and put it front and center for that historic piece. So really, really in great support. The community has been in great support with this. And so I'm asking that you all do the same. And then there's another piece, I think, that's here a little later. That's staff recommendation to defer. I think that's a great idea to defer as well. So thank you, guys, for your service and the work that you do. And Happy New Year.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm looking at my list, and I don't see any other council members, unless you're hiding, which you could be. All right. So if we get to a particular case, we'll... Councilman Hall, you're trying to hide from me, but I see you back there. Thank you, Councilman. I just want to make sure we take care of everybody. All right. All right. So seeing no other, I don't see any other council members, commissioners. So next is item E, which is items for deferral withdrawn. I think Lisa, you're going to take us through those? Okay.
The following items are for deferral or withdrawal. And I will note that there have been a couple of changes since publication of your agenda. So I will be noting any changes as we come to them. Starting with item number 1, 88P 038001 Long Hunter Chase. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 meeting. Item number 2, 2015 SP 069003 Shelby Woods Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. On page 4 of your agenda, item number 3, 2023 S 016001 840 Old Lebanon Dirt Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 meeting. Item number 4, 2016 SP 024005 McGavick House SP Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 meeting. Item number 5, 2020 S 20001 Plan of Hamilton Place. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number 6, 2022 S 232001 Kings Subdivision. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 meeting. Item number 7, 2022 S 247001 Millie Sweeney and Kirk M. Sweeney. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 meeting. Item number 8, 2022 S 259001 Resub of Lot 2 of the Plan of Rural Hills Acres. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 meeting. Item number 9, 2022 S 264001 5713 and 5715 Maldina Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 meeting. Item number 10, 2022 SP 036001 Harpeth Reserve. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting. Item number 11, 2022 SP 071001 Liberty Lane. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 meeting. Item number 12, 2022 SP 079001 Hillside SP. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 meeting. Item number 13, 2022 SP 080001 408 Woodland Street. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 meeting. And I would note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number 14, 2023 SP 003001 630 Division Street. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 meeting. And I would note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number 15, 2022 Z 014TX 001 Text Amendment Related to Trees. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 meeting. Item number 16, 2018 SP 026009 The Reservoir Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 meeting. And I would note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number 19, 2023 Z 01, I'm sorry, 2023 Z 001 TX 001 A Text Amendment Related to Utility Locations. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 23 meeting. Item number 25, 2019 SP 014003 Goodrich Townhomes. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 Planning Commission Meeting. Item number 28A, 2022 SP 082001 Skyview. And the associated item 28B, 878P 001 Skyview PUD Cancellation. Staff recommendation is to deferral to March 9 for both items. And I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recused from both items. Item number 29, 2022 SP 084001 5646 Amalie Drive. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 meeting. Item number 31, 2022 SP 087001 6010 Pasco Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 meeting. Item number 32, 2023 SP 009001 5901 California SP. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 meeting. Item number 36, 2023 Z 001 PR 001 A Rezoning Request on Luton Street. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 23 meeting. Item number 20, I'm sorry, 38, 2023 Z 004 PR 001 A Rezoning Request on Old Buena Vista Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 meeting. Item number 42, 2023 Z 008 PR 001 A Rezoning Request on Brick Church Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 23 meeting. Item number 43, 2023 Z 010 PR 001 A Rezoning Request on Alberta Street. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 meeting. Item number 45, 2022 Z 140 PR 001 A Rezoning Request on Misty Cape Cove. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 meeting. Item number 46, 18884P 005 A PUD Revision on Hobson Drive. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 meeting. And I would note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number 48, 2021 S 183001 Resubdivision of Part of Lot 40 Plan of Clifton. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 meeting. And item number 49, 2022 S 079002 Williamson Homestead. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 9 meeting.
Thank you, Lisa. I have a question.
Yes.
What about item 18? Can you tell me about item 18?
That one is, should have been noted on tentative consent. I will read it off.
Tentative consent.
Yes.
Thank you.
Apologies.
Perfect. All right, commissioners, there is a lot of these. Just, we'll go slow. We'll make sure we get these right. So Lisa, keep, we'll keep track. All right. So here are the items for deferral withdrawal. Items number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 19, 25, 28A, 28B, 29, 31, 32, 36, 38, 42, 43, 45, 46, 48, and 49. That's better than my normal odds, I think. So, okay. So commissioners, item number 24, no. So Lisa, what is that?
24 is on tentative consent.
And 31 is on, is deferred.
31 was deferred.
Yep. All right. Commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral withdrawal. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion. And is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. All those items are deferred or withdrawn. So now we're on to the consent agenda, item F. And so Lisa is going to take us through the consent agenda as well.
As information for our audience, nope, sorry, wrong one. Let's start here. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items, unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda. I will read through the items that are on tentative consent, both the item number and the project name. And I will ask if there is anyone here in opposition to the item. If there is anyone in opposition, please raise your hand. That item will then be pulled off of the agenda and presented in the order that it appears on the agenda. Starting on page 6, item number 17, 2022 Z 018 TX 001 A Text Amendment Related to a Two-Story Residential Overlay. Is there anyone in opposition to item 17? 17 will be on consent. Item 18, 2022 Z 019 TX 001 A Text Amendment Related to Adaptive Residential and Industrial Zones. Is there anyone in opposition to item 18? 18 will be on consent. Item 20A and 20B. 20A is 2022 CP 008002 North Nashville Community Plan Amendment. The associated case, 2022 SP 076001 1833 Ed Temple Boulevard SP. Is there anyone in opposition to 20A and 20B? Those items will be on consent. Item number 21A, 2022 CP 011001 South Nashville Community Plan Amendment and the associated case, 21B, 2022 SP 083001 Driftwood. Is there anyone in opposition to 21A and B? Those items will be on consent. Item number 22A, 2022 CP 011003 South Nashville Community Plan Amendment. And 22B, 2022 Z 145 PR 001 Plan Amendment and Rezoning on Oriole Avenue. Is there anyone in opposition to 22A or 22A and 22B? Those items will be on consent. Item number 23, 2017 SP 075005 Creative Way Villages SP Amendment. Is there anyone in opposition to item 23? 23 will be on consent. Item 24, 2018 SP 010002 Tailgate Brewery. Is there anyone in opposition to item 24? 24 will be on consent. Item number 26, 2021 SP 037003 1908 Lebanon Pike Residential Amendment. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 26? 26 will be on consent. 27 will be presented. Item number 30, yes. Item number 30, 2022 SP 086001 Fourteenth and Hines. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 30? 30 will be on consent. Item number 33, 2023 SP 015001 A Rezoning on Dickerson Pike HG Hill SP. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 33? 33 will be on consent. Item number 34A and the associated case, 34B, 2022 SP 075001 The Lincoln Tech SP. And 2005 P 029001 Lincoln Tech Institutional Overlay Cancellation. Is there anyone in opposition to items 34A and 34B? Those items will be on consent. Item number 35, 2023 NHC 001001 Lathan Youngs Conservation Overlay. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 35? Okay. 35 will be presented. 36 is deferred. Item number 37, 2023 Z 002 PR 001 A Rezoning on Buena Vista Pike. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 37? 37 will be on consent. Which one? No. This one. This one wasn't requested. Item number 39 will be presented. So 37 consent. Was there anyone in opposition to item 37? No. Okay. 39 will be presented. Item number 40, 2023 Z 006 PR 001. It's a rezoning request on Brick Church Pike. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 40? 40 will be on consent. Item number 41, 2023 Z 007 PR 001 A Rezoning Request on Robertson Avenue. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 41? Okay. 41 will be presented. Item number 44, 2022 Z 130 PR 001. It's a rezoning request on Chestnut Avenue. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 44? 44 will be on consent. Item number 40, no, that one was deferred. Item number 47, 2013 UD 002041 Murfreesboro Pike UDO. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 47? 47 will be on consent. Item number 50, 2022 S 129001 A Subdivision on Watts Creek Pike. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 50? 50 will be on consent. I didn't see a hand, did I? No. Okay. And item number 51, 2022 S 274001 Resubdivision of Lot 86 Murray Heights. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 51? 51 will be on consent. Chair, I'm going to... Chair, I'm going to now go through and read all of the captions. Everyone bear with me for a moment. As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert for the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within sixty days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. The following items are on the consent agenda. Item number seventeen, twenty-twenty-two Z zero-one-eight T X zero-zero-one. It's a request to amend the zoning code to create a two-story residential overlay. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number eighteen, twenty-twenty-two Z zero-one-nine T X zero-zero-one. It's a request to amend the zoning ordinance to change the multifamily use and industrial from being permitted with conditions to requiring a special exception. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number twenty-A, twenty-twenty-two C P zero-zero-eight zero-zero-two, North Nashville Community Plan Amendment. It's a request to amend the North Nashville Community Plan by changing from T-three Neighborhood Maintenance to T-three Neighborhood Center for property located on Ed Temple Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number ten-B, twenty-twenty-two S P zero-seven-six zero-zero-one, eighteen-thirty-three Ed Temple Boulevard S P. It's a request to rezone from S P, from R six to S P for property located on Ed Temple Boulevard to prevent a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number twenty-one A, twenty-twenty-two C P zero-one-one zero-zero-one, South Nashville Community Plan Amendment. It's a request to amend the South Nashville Community Plan to change the policy from conservation and district industrial to T-five mixed-use. Staff recommendation is to approve. The associated case, twenty-one B, twenty-twenty-two S P zero-eight-three zero-zero-one, Driftwood. It's a request to rezone from O G to S P for property located on Driftwood Street to permit a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number twenty-two A, twenty-twenty-two C P zero-one-one zero-zero-three, South Nashville Community Plan Amendment. It's a request to amend the South Nashville Community Plan to change the policy from neighborhood evolving to transition for properties located on Austin Avenue and Oriole Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number twenty-two B, the associated case, twenty-twenty-two Z one-forty-five P R zero-zero-one. It's a request to rezone from R S five to O R twenty for property located on Austin Avenue and Oriole Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number twenty-three, twenty-seventeen S P zero-seven-five zero-zero-five, Creative Way Villages S P Amendment. It's a request to amend a portion of a specific plan for property located on Creative Way to increase the permitted height. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number twenty-four, twenty-eighteen S P zero-one-zero zero-zero-two, Tailgate Brewery. It's a request to amend a specific plan on property located on Charlotte Pike to permit all uses of C L brewery agricultural activity and distillery uses. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. And I would note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one S P zero-three-seven zero-zero-three, nineteen-oh-eight Lebanon Pike Residential Amendment. It's a request to amend a specific plan on property located on Lebanon Pike at the northeast corner of Omahondro Drive and Lebanon Pike to modify the maximum height condition. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number thirty, twenty-twenty-two S P zero-eight-six zero-zero-one, Fourteenth and Hines. It's a request to rezone from M U I A to S P for property located on Fourteenth Avenue at the corner of Hines and Fourteenth. Staff recommend to permit a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number thirty-three, twenty-twenty-three S P zero-one-five zero-zero-one, H G Hill S P. It's a request to rezone from C S to S P for property located on Dickerson Pike to permit all uses of M U G A N S. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number thirty-four A, twenty-twenty-two S P zero-seven-five zero-zero-one, Lincoln Tech S P. It's a request to rezone from C S, O R I, R M twenty, and R S five to S P for properties located on Gallatin Avenue and Douglas Avenue to permit a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions, including the updated conditions on the memo that were left on your desk. The associated case, thirty-four B, two-thousand-and-five S P zero-two-nine zero-zero-one, Lincoln Tech Institutional Overlay Cancellation. It's a request to cancel an institutional overlay for various properties on Gallatin Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number thirty-seven, twenty-twenty-three Z zero-zero-two P R zero-zero-one. It's a request to rezone from O R twenty to C L for property located on Buena Vista Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number forty, twenty-twenty-three Z zero-zero-six P R zero-zero-one. It's a request to rezone from C N and C S to M U L A for property located on Brick Church Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number forty-four, twenty-twenty-two Z one-thirty P R zero-zero-one. It's a request to rezone from I R to M U L A N S for property located on Chestnut Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. And I would note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number forty-seven, two-thousand-and-thirteen U D zero-zero-two zero-four-one, Murfreesboro Pike U D O. It's a request for modification to the Murfreesboro Pike U D O to allow for a drive-through and minor modifications to the perimeter landscape strip and interior landscape standard, or landscape islands. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number fifty, twenty-twenty-two S one-twenty-nine zero-zero-one. It's a request for concept plan approval to create ten lots on property located on Watts Creek Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including a variance from Section four-two-five A one-A, Section four-two-five A one-B, Section four-two-five A one-C, and Section four-two-five A one-D of the Metropolitan Subdivision Regulations, and an exception to permit disturbance of a portion of an area identified for primary conservation. And item number fifty-one, twenty-twenty-two S two-seventy-four zero-zero-one, resubdivision of Lot eighty-six Murray Heights. It's a request for final plat approval to create two lots on property located on Seifert Lane. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and find that the development can provide for harmonious development under item H, Other Business. Item number fifty-two, new employee contract for Todd Okla Chaney and Darrell Hill. Item number fifty-three, employee contract renewal for Joran Dunavet and Bob Murphy. Item number fifty-four, thirty-first-in-long D R C procedures. Item number fifty-five, bonus height certification memo for Hyatt Caption. Item number fifty-six, bonus height certification memo for Nashville Yards Parcel Nine. Commissioner Blackshear is recused on fifty-six. And item number sixty, to accept the director's report.
Great work, Lisa. Well said. Is there a mo... So, sorry, we're not even ready for a motion yet. But I want to, before we get into anymore, I want to make sure to be one-hundred percent transparent that we do have some exciting news on other business, and this is going to be adopted under item fifty-two. And just to be transparent, and I just want to, I'm probably out of order, but I think this is the appropriate time to say that we have hired a deputy director, if you all approve this item, and his name is Todd Okla Chaney. And he, I want to say the director could have just hired this person, but the team went out of their way, allowed me to sit in with the other staff members to go through several different folks that applied for the job. And I want to thank the team for allowing me to do that. Also, our vice chair was part of that process, and then you all received documentation and email about the new deputy director. And I think that it shows that the director and the team really want to make sure that this particular person fits with the culture. And so I just want to say thank you for allowing us to be part of that process. You could have just hired this person. And so I just want to say thanks to the entire team for allowing us to be part of that process. And I think that I'm very excited about it, and I think Commissioners that you will be very excited. I'm excited that the director has more help, and I think that it's going to be a good thing. And Todd was the city director, planning director for Asheville, and you all got his resume, and he, I think, is going to bring a lot to the table for us. So, Director, good, good work, and I want to thank the team for allowing me to be part of that process. So these particular, so now it's time to go through the items that are on the consent agenda, and so we'll go slow. There are a lot of items since it's the new year. And so those particular items are item that will be passed altogether are items number seventeen, eighteen, twenty-A, twenty-B, twenty-one-A, twenty-one-B, twenty-two-A, twenty-two-B, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-six, thirty, thirty-three, thirty-four-A, and thirty-four-B, thirty-seven, forty, forty-four. I need my reader glasses. Forty-seven, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, and sixty. Is that correct, Lisa?
Yes.
All right, Commissioners, you heard the items to adopt on the consent agenda. Is there a motion? There's a motion, and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Pose no? Ayes have it, and those items have been adopted. And so Commissioners, and to the public, that leaves us to consider four items, which are items number twenty-seven, thirty-five, thirty-nine, and forty-one. Is that correct, Lisa?
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven, thirty-five, thirty-nine, and forty-one.
Yes. All right, and so just for a minute, if everybody could exit quickly, we'll kind of let everybody take off, and then we'll, we'll start in just about thirty seconds. All right, here we go again. All right, so a couple of things, this is probably out of order too, and I apologize, but I do want to say to the Commissioners, starting a new year, thank you for your service to the city. I know, I appreciate it. I know that all of the Commissioners, in serving with you, are extremely passionate about our lovely city, and you love our city. And so I just want to say thank you. It's a pleasure to work with you. And I want to say thank you for being a volunteer, because this service is one-hundred percent volunteerism, and I just want to say thank you for doing that, and welcome to a new year, twenty-twenty-three. I also want to say to the, to the public, we, this is a public meeting. We always expect professionalism from both ways, so please know outbursts or keep it professional, and I, I really hope the lawyers will keep it professional. I'm just joking, that's a joke. That's it, that's a joke. And so for all of you, this, maybe this is your first time being here, the process goes like this. We have the presentation, we'll open the public hearing, the applicant will have ten minutes, and they'll, they'll be able to save two minutes for rebuttal. And then everyone wishing to speak in support, everybody who have two minutes, you come up, you tell us your name and your address for the record, and then after all of the folks in support speak, then anyone wishing to speak in opposition then speaks, and then the applicant has two minutes for rebuttal if they didn't use their entire ten minutes. Then the council member will, will finish that, that public hearing, and will declare the public hearing closed, and that's when we'll deliberate on that particular item. I just wanted to let everybody know that's kind of our process. We're a very friendly group, and we hope that you're friendly to us as well. So that leads us to our first item, which is item twenty-seven for the presentation.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Amelia Lewis, and I will be presenting item twenty-seven tonight. The request is to rezone from A R two-A, C S, and R fifteen to specific plan or S P zoning to permit a mixed-use development. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. So the site is shown on the screen in gray. The site itself is approximately two-hundred-and-fourteen acres, located off of Music Valley Drive, north of McGavick Pike. The site has frontage along Music Valley Drive, which is bordered on the east side, McGavick Pike, along the southern portion of the site, and Pennington Bend along the western portion of the site. The western and southern portions of the site contain floodplain, which will be discussed throughout the presentation. The site was previously used for farmland and contains existing farm structures, but today is largely undeveloped. The proposed development is intended to provide an agricultural-themed development with a mix of uses, including multifamily residential, hotel, restaurant, event center space, R V campsites, cabin spaces, and other campground amenities. So as you can see from the total acreage of the site, and the site on the screen is pretty large, so what I have attempted to do is break it down into really three different sections that we can walk through, and I will do that starting with the northernmost section. So along Music Valley Drive to the east, there are three vehicular entrances, including the primary entrance into the development, which you can see just south of the purple structure on the screen. I apologize if you are colorblind, but it's largely where the two dots are, or the dotted lines are that connect into, that lead into the site. This portion of the site also contains the multifamily units, the hotel, and the event center. The S P would permit a maximum of three-hundred multifamily units and several four-story structures at the northeast corner of the site, and those are kind of the larger orange rectangular buildings there on the site. A five-story, one-hundred-and-twenty-room hotel is located just north of the primary entrance drive, adjacent to the multifamily. South of the primary entrance drive and along Music Valley Drive is a proposed event center, outdoor amphitheater, and associated surface parking for the event center. Towards the internal portion of the site, we start to see the proposed RVs, which we'll discuss more on the next slide. And then looking at the northwest corner of the site, the area remains largely undeveloped over here, and this portion of the site is intended to be used for agricultural uses and passive recreation, such as parks and walking trails. Okay, and that leads us to kind of the middle portion of the site. As I previously mentioned, we started to see the beginning of kind of the RV layout on that previous slide, and now moving down internal to the site. This internal portion of the site is the primary area for the campsites, resort, event center, and the cabins. A total of four-hundred-and-fifty campsites and cabins are proposed throughout the site. The primary area for the campsites, as you can see, kind of shown in the green, clouded areas, are bounded by the existing hedgerows, intended to break up the areas of the campsites as opposed to one large kind of surface structure that can often be found in RV parks. The RV sites are organized in a linear pattern and connected by a series of private drives. The cabin sites, shown at the bottom-right portion of the screen, are intended to be developed with the existing grates in this area and maintaining as much tree canopy around the cabins. as much tree canopy around the cabins. At the time of final, a grading plan will be provided for staff to evaluate the locations and proposed grading. This portion of the site includes one vehicular access to Pennington Bend, which is shown just kind of off the screen here. So Pennington Bend is located to the west side. And so there's one vehicular access point that unfortunately kind of goes off into that red box area, but leads to the roadway. And this vehicular access point is intended to be gated and only used for emergency vehicles. And so then we start to move into the southern portion of the site, which includes some RVs along the west, or RV campsites along the western portion of the site, and leads down to McGavick Pike, which borders the southern property line. The southern portion of the site includes a proposed restaurant, microbrewery, and tasting room. Several accessory buildings are located throughout the site to provide site amenities, such as the welcome center, check-in, camp store, and other camp activities. And there is one vehicular access point located off of McGavick Pike to lead into that commercial area. So one large feature of the site, and I think it's going to be a large portion of our discussion tonight, is the floodplain on the site. So I wanted to show the 100 and 500-year floodplain on the site today. And we will discuss that more as we discuss our policies on the site as well. So there are two policies on the site. The first policy is conservation, which is shown on the site in green. And I think we're all pretty familiar with conservation, but the intent of the conservation policy is to keep undisturbed, environmentally sensitive land features in a natural state when possible. The proposed SP regulations to address the overall goal of preserving these areas include a minimum of 20% of the site retained for open space and 20% of the existing tree canopy to be retained. Given the large area of the site, 20% comes roughly to 42 acres. And this area would be set aside as open space. Additional guidance within the conservation policy state that within these areas, development is grouped on the site to preserve environmentally sensitive features. So while portions of the conservation policy area are proposed to be developed with the site, the policy guidance includes the extent to which the natural landforms and vegetations on the site are considered. And the proposed plan includes, intends to use the natural tree buffers existing on the, on the site today as a feature of the site and to retain that tree canopy, while also enhancing the existing stream at the southwest portion of the site to make it a protected amenity feature of the site. Specifically related to floodplain guidance in the conservation policy, the conservation policy guidance states that where the site contains floodplains, low-intensity land uses may be permitted while keeping disturbance to a minimum. And where a site containing floodplain also contains land that is outside of the floodplain, development should be such that the buildings are grouped on the portions of the site that is not floodplain, leaving the floodplain for the creation of public or private open space. So with this proposal, the higher-intensity uses, including the multifamily hotel, amphitheater spaces, are grouped towards Music Valley Drive, out of the floodplain area and within the more intense policy, which is the suburban community center shown on the site in orange. Additionally, portions of the site within the floodplain, including the portions of the site at the northwest and southeast portions of the site, have been identified as open space areas. The second policy on the site, suburban community center, is located on the eastern portion adjacent to Music Valley Drive. As I just mentioned, this is where a bulk of the non-residential and residential uses are. These policy areas are described as areas consisting of a mix of uses, including commercial, office, residential, and institutional land uses, given that this area is located off of Music Valley Drive, away from existing residences and the floodplain on the site. So that largely concludes my presentation. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions.
Thank you, Amelia. All right. So we'll open this, Commissioners will open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? Come on up. So you have 10 minutes and you can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal. And please state your name and address. Thank you.
Do I need to do anything to turn it? It's on. Okay, perfect. And I'm not too loud. That's okay. So my name is Katie Hallgren. I am a landscape architect with Northgate Resorts. My address is 2137 Burton Street, Southeast Grand Rapids, Michigan. So as I stated, I'm Katie Hallgren with Northgate Resorts. I'm joined by Shannon Sullivan.
Can you talk into the microphone? Yeah, you have to maybe. Yeah, there we go. Sorry, you're, you're tall. Sorry about that.
Frequent problem for me.
Everybody can't.
I'm also joined by Mickey Sullivan and his engineering team with Gresham Smith, and Sean Henry with Toon and Trigana White. And we would like to reserve two minutes for rebuttals. Thank you, Commissioners and staff, for your attention to our project. Although CM Syracuse is not able to be here, we've worked with him closely, and he has provided a strong letter of support for our project. Northgate Resorts is a family-owned camp resort company based in Grand Rapids, Michigan. We proudly own and operate 30 premier camp resorts throughout the U.S. This project, The Bend, is in partnership with Ann Gleves Farrell, whose father, Jim Gleves, developed Gleves Farm where our project is located. Over the years, Ann has been approached by numerous developers looking to acquire all or portions of her property for various uses. Her guiding principle in deciding the farm's future was the desire that it be developed in a way that paid tribute to the agricultural legacy of her family home and provided a high-quality vacation experience in a farm-themed setting. With like-minded philosophies and goals, Mrs. Farrell and Northgate Resorts entered into a partnership to transform Gleves Farm into a unique destination inspired by its farming history. Over the last three years, we've worked closely with Ann and our team of consultants to develop this unique destination. We first met with Planning and CM Syracuse a year ago this month to discuss the project and continue to meet with them over the past year and stay in consultation. We conducted multiple neighborhood and business association meetings over the last six months, adjusting our plans to address their concerns. Numerous letters of support have been submitted, including one from Butch Spiriton and the Donaldson Heritage Chamber of Commerce, and many are here to speak tonight. The existing T3 CC and CO policies, multiple existing zoning classifications, and the adjacent CA uses created a need to study the site in creative ways. These efforts over the past year resulted in the current plan that is shown up there, which blends the aspirations of Ann Gleves Farrell, Northgate's high standards, and planning staff concerns in a contextually appropriate preliminary SP plan. So project concerns, the following are concerns that we've heard in our meetings and how they have been addressed. So first of all, noise. We have located the highest intensity uses along Music Valley Drive, farthest away from residential. At Northgate, we have strictly enforced quiet hours from 10 to 8 in our campgrounds. Our project includes 300 residential units, as well as a camp resort, which will not be successful if we have noise issues. On average, the events venue will host one large outdoor event per month, and we'll meet all noise ordinance requirements, including time limits. Visual concerns. The overall project aesthetic will honor the agricultural heritage of the property. Landscape buffers along the property lines will be used to obscure and screen the impact of our development. These buffers will contain a mix of deciduous evergreen and ornamental trees and shrubs per metro requirements. This includes a 50-foot buffer along Pennington Bend Road that includes a 1.25-mile greenway, and also a 30-foot minimum buffer along the northern property line. Trees will be planted throughout the resort to meet the current landscape ordinance. Wildlife. We're maintaining a minimum of 20% open space and 20% of the existing tree coverage. Open space areas create habitat where wildlife can live, as well as provide corridors so that wildlife can move throughout the property. The existing wetland, springs, and channelized streams will be remediated and enhanced to provide higher-quality wildlife habitat than what currently exists. We're committed to planting lowland hardwoods and native plants to supplement the existing vegetation throughout the campground. And now Mickey Sullivan will address the other concerns.
Thank you, Katie. Flooding and conservation policy issues or concerns, for the success of our project, we have to accommodate and plan for flooding. As such, we minimize project components in the floodplain. Development in the floodplain includes items that don't exacerbate flooding or can withstand flooding. For example, the dries within the floodplain are planned to be pervious. Many of Northgate's 30 campgrounds across the United States are located in floodplains. It's an appropriate, low-impact use for floodplains. As such, Northgate has extensive experience in planning for and dealing with floods. Each of their campgrounds has emergency action plans covering a variety of emergencies, including, but not limited to, flood preparation and flooding. This project is no different. We will have specific emergency action plans, which will include things like notifying guests, directing traffic flow, and specific tasks for all Northgate personnel. The final SP drawings will be engineered in accordance with all local, state, and federal regulations, including any analysis of the jurisdictional waters at the time of the permanent application. The staff report explains the intent of the CEO policy. Their recommendations suggest that with conditions, their approval with conditions signifies that we think we've met that intent. Another concern was traffic. Traffic impacts say was performed showing no adverse impact by development and no warrant for a traffic signal. We've worked in dot to ensure that we have adequate and safe access into and from our property, which includes turn lane extension on Music Valley Drive at McGavick Pike. A left turn lane on Music Valley Drive into the project, and we propose no access to Pennington Bend Road except for the emergency exit. The event center traffic is also a concern for some. We provided adequate onsite parking for a full-capacity event. Parking spaces will be tied to ticket holders who buy tickets in advance, so we know what the parking demand will be. And finally, we will provide offset traffic management as required based on ticket sales. And for cultural and biological resources, there will be studies required by TDEC and Corps of Engineers, which will be performed as we move into the project. Summary, I just want to say we will follow all local, state, federal regulations that are applicable to this project. We will continue to work with planning and all metro agencies through final SP approval. Again, we appreciate your time and your attention.
Thank you. And we'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in support of the project? Come on up. And you have two minutes. The timer is right. Yeah, can hand this. And then the, just so everybody knows, the timer is right there for your two minutes and it will, it will beep.
Okay. My name is Paul May. I live at 2409 Pennington Bend Road. Lived there since we bought the house in 2013. We find that this is the lowest-impact solution for this property. We've been worried about whoever would buy it, what they would do. And we've solicited the neighborhood, as you can see there, have signatures, and that was done just last night and this morning, to make sure that nobody changed their mind. I knocked on every door from the McGavick Street down to the Riley Bridge. We've talked at length amongst the neighbors. We are confident that this is the best solution for this property. You know, there have been people in the past that wanted to go in here and build condos and townhouses, which would have impacted us because the traffic they wanted to have was the access to Pennington Bend Road. This proposal does not allow for that. The only access that this project would have to Pennington Bend Road would be for emergency access, and that's why we are standing behind it. That's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming down. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Come on up.
Dear Chairman Atkins and Board members, my name is Michael Thomas. My address is 2607 Crump Drive, Nashville, 37214. I'm here on behalf of the Hobbs Property and Cumberland Hospitality Group. The Hobbs family has been in business and a part of the development of Music Valley Drive for so long, they remember it was called Elsie Miller Road when they started. Through the years, we have seen fields paved, buildings built, out-of-the-mall's come and go, and amusement parks closed. We've seen our city stop investing in our area and have survived literally year to year as a group of small businesses offering authentic Nashville experience while clinging to what family businesses our great city, great city still has. The Northgate development is truly a perfect balance of green space, greenways, tourism, and hopefully, Northgate can be a catalyst for new investment from government and private means. The timing for this project is fantastic. Nashville has dozens of areas that are prime for new investment. Music Valley needs new investment, and this is it. Our area is commercialized, our area is commercial area, and provides million and sales tax generation, liquor by drinks tax, hotel and motel tax, and commercial property taxes. The Northgate project is a perfect extension to these businesses and will only add to the tax base in the area that has slid backwards. Thank you for your time in letting voice our opinion. Sincerely, the Hobbs Businesses and over 100 of our employees.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? I'll make sure we get everybody. All right. Oh, come on up. Welcome.
My name is Ann Gleves. I haven't ever done anything like this before, but I'm just going to speak from the heart. We moved to the Bend in 1960. My daddy ran a grade-A dairy. He milked about 90 Holstings. And the farm was always just beautiful. It was a showcase. It looked like a golf course. When daddy walked around and if he saw weed, you know, back then, everybody had their pocket knife. He'd literally get out and dig the, you know, dig the weed out. And I'm just want to say, you know, I'm proud to be a farmer's daughter. Have any of y'all, did any of y'all grow up on a farm? Okay. What about your grandparents? Have you had the opportunity? It was special times, wasn't it? And I can tell y'all, growing up on a farm was just, it was wonderful. I mean, from bottle feeding the calves to, you know, playing in the hay to swinging on grapevines. Didn't smoke any of them. But, and you know, and I'd see my daddy, he'd be out there, you know, growing corn, putting it in the silo, baling hay, plating the creeks. And just, in general, just, you know, ran around the farm with the creek. One time, friends and I, we did decide if we dammed it up, we could have a pool. I did get a little trouble for, for that. But my dream has always been to honor my mom and dad and to honor farm life. I remember when my daddy, in 1970, he was on the Dairyman's Incorporated Board, and he went up to New York. And they took all the board to the zoo. Daddy came back telling me, he goes, since, he goes, you know, they had dairy cows in the zoo. And we were laughing, like, oh, man, you know, what about that? But you know, it's been at least probably five to six generations now from people being away from the farm. And it's funny, I'll even have kids ask me, you know, about a whole, oh, no, is that my timer?
Time flies when you're having, you can finish your sentence and, you know.
Okay. Well, let me just say, my vision is to honor my mom and dad and farm life. I feel very, very blessed to have met Jim Bosinbrook and be involved with Northgate. And also, what I want to say about Jim that just makes my heart happy is like, when he comes up with an idea, he'll say, now, Ann, do you think your daddy would like that? My daddy would be 105 years old right now. But anyway, I treasure the farm. I love the farm. And as you've seen, all the things that they have planned.
Thank you.
And keep it in its natural state.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? All right. Seeing no one else, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Welcome.
Hello. I am David Kleinfeldter with the firm of Reno and Kavanaugh, 424 Turf Street. It's going to be hard to get in in two minutes to respond to an applicant at 10, but I'll do my best. Represent Nancy Quinn, whom you'll hear do my best representing Nancy Quinn, whom you'll hear from shortly as a resident. I ask that you recommend disapproval of this SP zoning. You have on your desk a copy of a letter from me that includes some images of the flooding and other things. Rarely do I disagree with staff on a policy interpretation. I am a planner and a lawyer, by the way. But here, this, in this plan, the staff and the applicant have noted that it preserves and meets the policy by preserving 20% of tree canopy and lands, which is, of course, just another way of saying destroys 80% of the tree canopy and preserved lands. The conservation policy shows that this commission determined that the Nashville Next Plan that it is, and I quote, "generally unsuitable for development due to environmentally sensitive features." 300 RV parking pads, a restaurant removal of trees, large-scale disturbance of the land is not consistent with your conservation policy. This is not a pretty-view issue, as I think I heard someone suggest. Conservation policy ensures that floodplains are able to filter stormwater, especially floodwaters, to prevent the environmental degradation of precious natural resource being our waterways. As you know, flooding on this property is not just a technical or theoretical possibility. This is one of the most damaged areas from the 2010 Great Flood of Nashville. This exhibit shows that the plan, and the arrows, by the way, I'll mention in a moment, those have to do with noise. The majority of the 300 RV parking pads, along with the restaurant, are proposed directly within the conservation policy. Hundreds of RV users will be connecting and disconnecting sewer lines every day to pipe inlets on these environmentally sensitive lands. This is a very big deal. This, please consider the whole context of the city as a whole. This is, our bends are one of the few places, one of the very few places that aren't considered to be appropriate for development. Need to mention the noise. There's a, that venue is right-abutting a residential neighborhood. The noise will travel across the river. I grew up on a river, so I know that. We ask that you please have them remove it or reorient it in the other direction. By the way, nobody's suggesting, and this will be it, that they don't develop the property. Out of the 248 acres, there are 90 that are completely outside and within the community center policy and can be developed in a way that's appropriate for this location. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up. Yes, everybody gets their fair share of their two minutes. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
My name is Nancy Quinn. I own property on Brush Hill Road on the bluff of the Cumberland River overlooking the proposed rezoning and development. I strongly urge you to recommend disapproval of this proposed rezoning. Of this 214-acre site, 120 acres sits within the 100-year floodplain, and merely half a dozen years ago, we as a community agreed via the Nashville Next Plan that this land was going to be preserved and protected via conservation policy. Now, an out-of-state developer wants to rezone and develop this floodplain at the risk of further endangering immediate residents in the area when our next 100- or 500-year flood happens. The negative impacts of this proposal far outweigh any benefits to the surrounding community. The sound pollution, light pollution, and environmental pollution from two years of construction, and then the ongoing sound, light, and environmental pollution from 350 RVs, 300 apartments, 100 cabins, 120 hotel rooms, 120-seat restaurant, and most offensively, a 4,800-capacity amphitheater is unacceptable. Nashville is currently applying to the USFW for an urban bird treaty grant, and light pollution is a critical issue for migratory birds, not to mention the destruction of foraging and nesting habitat, and the displacement and loss of habitat for other wildlife. Proceeding without an environmental impact study is to proceed with disregard for our limited natural resources. I also submitted to the commissioners a letter from Mr. Albert Bender, talking as fast as I can, from Mr. Albert Bender, the leading Native American activist in the area, his opinion. And the opinion of the Tennessee Division of Archaeology is that should an archaeological survey be conducted, there is a high potential that archaeologically significant sites will occur. Proceeding without requiring an archaeological survey is to proceed with reckless disregard for the chance to uncover and preserve history significant to this area. For those of us who reside on the Brush Hill Road bluff, the proposed development would drastically and negatively impact our quality of life and the salability and value of our properties. Again, I'll just say, we have a plan. It's the Nashville Next Plan. This is protected, and I think no conversation should start.
Thank you.
Until they're off the conversation, conservation, conservation land. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? There's a gentleman coming behind you. We'll go next. Yep. We'll get to everybody. We'll get to. Welcome.
Thank you. Name's Aaron Williamson. Regional Vice President with Campgrounds of America, representing addresses 2572 and 2626 Music Valley Drive. I'll be speaking on behalf of Campgrounds of America, and the commission is aware that these campgrounds neighbor the proposed development, and on the map there, we have the entire north section that neighbors this property. We're concerned about the proposed development with its impact on our own properties, and we've detailed these concerns in a letter submitted to the commissioners on January 10th. Our attorney has had a constructive conversation with the engineering developer this morning that gives us confidence, and we look forward to continuing to work with Northgate on alleviating our concerns to benefit of both parties as well as the surrounding community. However, we do have a complete, to have a complete understanding of the potential impacts of these properties, Kway still needs an opportunity to receive and review the documentation from the developer that demonstrates how Kway's concerns will be addressed. We recognize the need to coexist with them and be good stewards and be amicable neighbors. As owner of the property, immediately adjacent to the proposal, and we have concerns about how this development will negatively impact our property and the business, again, previously stated in the letter to you guys on January 10th. The first, I want to address just two currents out of that letter. The first is the flood control and stormwater management. We already have substantial amount of community drainage that running through our properties and through the subject property. The ditch connecting between the two of us is not being maintained by Metro City or by the current owner, and has obstructions that are causing backup and reverse flow onto our property at Nashville Kway Resort. The subject property regularly floods. If Northgate does not properly address the drainage or flooding, it will cause significant negative impact to our business and the surrounding community. The second one is traffic. Traffic is already difficult in the area, and additional vehicles will make this traffic untenable. The light show was not given a permit just a few years ago down this same road due to increased traffic. We regularly see traffic control officers at the intersection during concerts and holidays. Music Valley is not currently constructed to handle the additional vehicles, and this will cause additional delays and congestion that will negatively impact the community and the business of Music Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, sir? Come on up. We're beeping over here. All right. There we go. Thank you, Lisa. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner and members of the commission. I'm Tony Gottlieb at 4108 Brush Hill Road. There are seven major dam projects that are upstream from Pennington Bend. Oldest Wolf Creek Diam dam was 1941-built, Dale Hollow, 1942, Center Hill, '42, Old Hickory Dam, '52, Cordell Hell Dam, '63, Percy Priest, 1963, and the newest, 1964. Interestingly enough, there's another eighth dam located right across the river from the proposed site, Lakewood Dam, a private dam which was built by the Cheek family in 1927. None of the dams are older than 100 years of a floodplain elevation delegation. We've had major Nashville floods, 1847, 1902, 1927, 1936, 1948, 1951, with the largest and fourth-largest floods in Nashville history having occurred within the past 12 years. In the rankings, Nashville is number one for flood risk in Tennessee. 2010 saw, from the western bluff view of the rezoning site, which is my backyard, have been described as a one-of-a-kind event. It was frightening. While I was aware that 2010 was a large part of an Old Hickory Dam operational area, I'm aware that the two largest earthquakes in the United States, the New Madrid, 1811, 1812, are overdue for their historical bicentennial recurrence. Pennington Bend is surrounded by water from a confluence of the stones and the Cumberland River, all downstream from these eight dams. With the absence of an emergency evacuation egress, the Gleaves Farm property could easily become a killing field.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. The signs blocking my view a little bit. Mr. Kleinfeldter, that's a hint. You can put it in front, right, great. There you go.
Hi, DeeDee Van De Boort, 5515 Rome Avenue. I don't live in this area, but I'm coming. I don't speak against or for this project, but I would like to remind you as a committee and a commission that we do have regulations for flood zoning, and I think that you do need to maintain that. As we have already seen in the past couple of years, flooding has occurred almost as bad as 2010 due to overbuilding, not allowing any areas now to have drainage. My west area was saved only by the quarry over there during the 2010, or you would have had worse flooding than what we saw. So, when you're looking at these projects, we need to maintain our zoning for flooding. And if people want to come in and buy this property, then they need to abide by those regulations, because I live in an area that is easily, you could rezone too, and we could have even more problems in my area. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Oh, this gentleman's coming behind you, and then, oh, come on up. Welcome.
Commissioners, I'm the Reverend Vicki Burgess. My husband, Tom, and I own a home at 4016 Brush Hill Road, looking directly across the river at this site. When we bought it in 2008, that was the reason we bought the property. We actually skirted the house and walked back to the bluff to see what our view would be. We've always known that something was going to happen to the beautiful farm property across from where our deck is, and our concerns really center around noise, for one thing, that outdoor amphitheater. Our property and all of my neighbors along the river bluff there, we sit 150 feet above the normal stage of the river, and that high vantage point brings some interesting noise, ability to hear noise from a great distance and hear small sounds really amplified where we are. I think that's why we are most concerned about this outdoor amphitheater. You know, one person's music might be another person's noise, so when we're sitting on our deck, enjoying that beautiful view, appreciating the fact that perhaps it will get developed like this instead of high-rises, that's what, that's what concerns us most is disrupting our, our deck time, which we do year-round. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome.
Thank you all so much for the time. My name is Beau Nave. I live at 4,000 Brush Hill, and I think following Reverend Burgess is a, is a good opportunity for me to kind of build on that. I don't want to really go into, I wrote a, wrote a letter previously listing out some, some, some areas of concern. There are a lot of smarter, more, more informed people on the, on the flood and on the zoning, and I can just share my perspective, which is my wife and I bought our home two years ago at the top of a pretty, pretty hot market, and it was a big commitment for us, but what made us comfortable with that is we just fell in love with, with, with that view and what we had in the area. And I did grow up on a farm, and my, my wife grew up in Memphis, and so our nice little compromise was I got to see the wildlife and be out in a quiet, serene area, and she got to be five miles from downtown. So, it was a very, very unique piece for us. But now to, I want to bring up just, again, the, the, the sound, which is our main concern, the amphitheater. I realize it's the back of the property, but it is facing the river, and you can't get away from that, that sound. You can snap your fingers and hear it from our vantage point. I can sit and listen to music playing at Scoreboard's Bar over by the hotel. It makes its way over to us, and we're pretty much right across from, from the inroad across the river. So, that is our, our, our main concern is just the, the light pollution and noise pollution.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you for the time. My name is Suzanne Nave. That was my husband. I live at 4,000 Brush Hill Road, and because I, at risk of, of being redundant and repeating a lot of the issues about noise pollution and light pollution, I just want to read something very brief. Wild, small birds such as various songbirds, woodpeckers, hummingbirds, wild turkeys, and that includes a rare female albino wild turkey, owls, ring-billed gulls, great gray herons, red-tailed hawks, duck, geese, deer, red and gray foxes, the occasional coyote, groundhogs, and most importantly, three bald eagles. That is a list of the wildlife that I see in my yard on a daily basis since living at Brush Hill for the last two years. Now, of course, not all of those every day, but we see those animals regularly, not just in our yard, but across the river on the bluff where this glamorized RV park is hopefully not going to be built. This is a list of some of the precious wildlife that I see regularly at my home at 4,000 Brush Hill that is directly across from the Cumberland River. It is a list of wildlife whose habitats and lives are at risk should this project come to fruition. When an ecosystem has been altered by commercial and other forms of loud, populated, and unnaturally-lit developments, wildlife may no, no longer be able to provide the food, the water, the cover, and the places to raise its young that is needed to survive. I have one last thing I'm going to squeeze in in five seconds. Settled north of Nashville in 1782, Inglewood began as a farming community. I have just one more thing. Today, people are moving back to this historic Inglewood neighborhood because of its history and beauty still reflected in the majestic Cumberland River.
Thank you.
That includes natural springs and beautiful sacred wildlife.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right. Hey, everybody. Thank you for having me. My name is Matt Hurd. I live at 4301 Brush Hill. I am not on the bluff side. I just want to say that, and I'm not actually here to talk about the noise complaint. I'm the Director of Environmental Science at Belmont University, and I've been studying water quality for 20 years, and I wanted to let you know it's fiscally irresponsible to do this. I'm not anti-development in any way at all, but I want you to understand I'm a Nashville native and grew up here, and I understand what it means to develop in a property like this, and I just want to put you back to 2010 for a second, which is the flood that we all know very well, but if we think about it for a second, 1,500 people had to be evacuated from Opryland and Opry Mills in this exact area, in this exact spot. If you read NOAA's floodplain reports from this, this exact area was underwater. It's at four feet of elevation. Okay? Understanding this and thinking about this development, it could be very fiscally irresponsible. Again, I'm not anti-development, but this is putting an individual family's choice and a private developer's choice over an incredible natural resource. As you think about Nashville, I want you to think about some of the places that we were spotted for development that we were very lucky did not get developed. Shelby Bottoms, right? A natural floodplain. This is the same kind of place that we're talking about here that has severe risk for it. I'm not here to advocate for my bed in my neighborhood. I agree with my neighbors. I really do. I only found out about this relatively recently, but I think it is a tremendous fiscal irresponsibility to try and develop in a floodplain, and I just want to make that very clear from my point as a scientist. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you so much for having us, and I, my name's Ella Kelleher. I own property along with my husband at 4014 Brush Hill Road. I don't want to reiterate too, too much, but I do want to express my deep concerns specifically around the wildlife. Since we moved in just last year, we have witnessed those three bald eagles that fly regularly in front of our home. I believe the environmental impact from the noise, light, traffic, and obviously, the development that's going to take place over potentially two years would significantly, excuse me, impact the, this wildlife. I also want to mention something that was brought up to us in one of the meetings we had with the planning site or with the planning and their representation. It was brought up to us that most of the studies that have been done have been done internally, and I think it's very irresponsible to not have an independent review of both the floodplains and traffic patterns, and it's something that I would request before any rezoning happens. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
Hi. Thanks for having us today. My name is Donna Center. I'm at 4112 Brush Hill Road, directly across from this proposed site. Mrs. Gleaves, I want to thank you for the lovely view.
Ma'am, ma'am, you have to address the chair.
Okay, sorry. I just wanted to thank her because I've had this wonderful view since 1998. Okay, sorry. I just wanted to thank her because I've had this wonderful view since 1998. And again, I'm not here just for the view. We've lived on this river home since 1998. It used to be a hunting cabin and still possesses many of the original features. Currently, all of the commercial properties across the river are hidden from view in the summertime. We've always had this amazing view of farm fields, cows, and hay bales after cutting. The sun's especially beautiful in the mornings as it rises above the trees and the fog rolling in from the Cumberland. And the sunset bathes the field in the gold in the afternoon, and you can occasionally hear the cows from the farm. And we see that eagle too, fly, those eagles fly in the morning and in the afternoon. I, I'm an RV-er too. This is too much. There's too much here. We appreciate this way of travel and we love to vacation in this way, but this is too much. And across from our neighborhood, because we are so high up, I can hear the neighbors on the other side of the river speaking on their deck. That's how the sound travels from across the river. So putting a 4,800-seat amphitheater turned toward the river would be loud. And is it just 4,800 seats? Because there's also a lawn there, so I'm assuming there's also lawn ticketing. So it's actually more, maybe more people than that. This could be a wonderful spot, but I believe there's too much there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Make sure we got, yep.
I'm Bruce Cordell. I'm at 4010 Brush Hill Road. And all I'm hearing is about the beauty of which it is. It's a beautiful area. It's a wildlife sanctuary, but I just want to know who bears responsibility or the liability should all of these people within this very small floodplain encounter a catastrophic event, which is inevitable at some point in time. So there's a lot of people. We're not thinking about a lot of visitors that are going to be attending these events. And I don't see that they really have a chance. So that's my biggest concern.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Ma'am? Come on up. Welcome.
Hey, Sylvia Johnny Tropiny from 1327 Riverwood Drive. I'm two blocks in from the bluff where my neighbors have been speaking about. I would like to ask you to consider deferring this decision until an independent study is done on the following items. Evacuation study for emergencies, the developer said that they were going to work on that after it was approved. I think that this really has to be talked about now. Consider 4,800 people at the amphitheater, 4,000 people at the Opry, really one exit. You're talking about a bottleneck at McGavick and Bryley Parkway. And if you see pictures from 2010, that area was underwater. So how many, you know, and if Pennington Bend, if you were even to be able to use that as an emergency evacuation, if it's under floodwater, then there's really just the one way that 10,000 people might be leaving. The other studies would be, would there be a toxic waste issue if the RV camps were underwater, you know, where the, where the, their, you know, where the waste pipes are? A true traffic study, you know, we have the Franklin Amphitheater now at the quarry that has nightmares of traffic because there's only one egress. It appears that the traffic study that I saw the other day is comparing the traffic here to a baseball stadium, which you could approach from four different directions. Here, there would just be, you know, Music Valley Drive and McGavick and Bryley. We need an environmental impact study. I live in Inglewood, two blocks from the bluff, and I can hear the concerts at the KOA campground now. The way that the noise and the light traffic is going to flow needs to be studied. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sir?
I'm William Reed. I live at 4,002 Brush Hill Road. And I think I'm uniquely qualified to talk about some of this because I've had this house since 1990. And we're about 85 feet above the high watermark by Topographical. But I was on the police department from 1970 when they started Opryland to 2007. So I was over there when they was first building it. They had little issues about, they had mounted patrols and somebody shot at the horses. So we had to go over and guard that thing every night on night shift and midnight shift till they built it. Well, when the 25-year tax break come up, they bailed out. They'd get more tax break. Well, they built Opry Mills. So I was in traffic, one of only two supervisors for about 20 years over there. And we got call after call. I met a lot of people on Pennington Bend personally, had to go talk to them. The dump trucks was coming out of there getting mud all over the roadway. And they're not able to do that by Tennessee state law. They have to take, clean the wheels off before they come down the roadway. Well, what happened, they decided because it flooded over there before that they needed to raise it up, I think, nine feet, best of my memory. So they dug all of the dirt up because it used to be Rudy's farm. And they decided it was contaminated. Even though the kids played in this Opryland for 25 years, it was all right. But when they decided to put pavement on it, buildings, they had to dig the dirt up. And they hauled this dirt out. And I found out later they take the dirt and burn it. But anyway, so I had to go meet these people and the dirt would get down there on the roadway. And I'm familiar with this area. In the back of this piece of property from the map I seen, they have no access out that's not in the low, in the floodplain. The far end up at McGavick Pike, it flooded the last time. So there's no way out of this with the map that I saw at the meeting. You cannot get out of this property by staying on their property. You have to go on somebody else's, and then you still get out in the floodplain. That part's not going to work, but the big part is the noise. We have to put up with it every spring and then all summer. And even Opryland had problems. They used to call them late at night and they'd have to go over and turn the music down. But you ought to know about the water, but the noise is what's the real problem's going to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing that two minute or better.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Sean Henry, 511th Avenue North, representing Northgate Resorts. Thank you. I'm going to speed along here. You've got a letter of support from Councilman Jeff Syracuse. You've heard from Council Lady Benedict, who represents the group on Brush Hill Road across the river. There were numerous meetings held, community meetings held last summer, last summer and even this fall, including across the river. You should have a petition of support signatures that I think was already submitted to you. I spoke with the President of the Homeowners Association for Wyndham Resorts, which is just on the other side, next to Pennington Bend there on the other side of the property. No objection. They're the most affected property owner and group of folks if there's any concern about flooding or noise or sight and sound. No objection. Brush Hill Road, the bluff, this property is a half mile, there's a distance of a half mile between Bryley Parkway, which is 10 lanes, by the way, 10 lanes of a lot of noise and traffic. The two lanes on Music Valley Drive, there's a half mile between that street and Pennington Bend. It's two-thirds of a mile from the Performance Venue, which is right there along Music Valley Drive, to the bluff across the river. Two-thirds of a mile. You've heard concerns about noise and things they've heard, but I think what you've heard is that's a function of height. They're up on a bluff. There's nothing we can do about that. And by the way, they're overlooking almost 600 RV parking spaces now. We got KOA right next door. There's over 600 RV camping sites out there right now. Okay? So this is pretty much more of the same. This is not a land use that is foreign to anyone out there. It's part of the tourism destination in which Pennington Bend is. Is this an appropriate use? Yes, it is. Is it going to comply with the stormwater regulations? Absolutely. It's going to. Your staff has done a thorough analysis. We ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So the councilman is not here, so seeing no one else wishing to speak, it's not allowed. Yes, sir. Do you have a question or? Now, so unfortunately, under our rules, that's not allowed. You've already spoke. All of them spoke. We don't allow that. It's not in our rules. And they'll, they'll be, now, I will tell you this, we'll, as the commissioners deliberate it, if they have a question to either Mr. Kleinfeldt or anyone else that can answer that, then we, then we'll do that. But under our rules, that's not. Well, and there is, once we are done here, it has to go to the council hearing. So there are several steps that it's got to go through. Okay. Thank you for understanding. I appreciate that. All right. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Chairman Lawson, you want to go first? Turn your mic on, though, Chairman.
There are a lot of issues here.
Commissioner.
You told me I couldn't use this.
No, I, we'll allow you to use it this time, Chairman.
I appreciate that. I really would like to hear some other opinions before I cast mine. There are just so many issues here, and I want to hear what my fellow commissioners have to say first.
Yes. Commissioner Clifton? Do it slowly and gently. There we go.
I wanted to hear from my fellow commissioners and the chair about whether this might be an appropriate time for a very small bathroom break. Is that two blocks?
No, no. And I would say that we've been here almost two hours, Commissioner, and so.
It's not for me, it was.
We, we. As long, is there objection by the commissioners to take a short five-minute bathroom break? I think that we need to do that. Okay. All right. Thank you, Commissioner. We'll take a short five-minute break, everyone. Thank you for understanding. Thank you. We'll go back into commission session without objection. And so we are back. Thank you for allowing us to take a small restroom break after a couple hours of being here. So we appreciate that. And, all right. We are on Commissioner Haynes. We're still on, this is where we're at. We're still on discussion. Commissioner Haynes, you recognize?
Thank you. I'm not sure if I'm happy or sad with my fellow commissioner for passing and going first. Question for staff, how large is the commercial services zoned area? It looks very small in the staff report. Do we know the number of acres in that area?
Let me get to the exact acreage, but you can see the CS parcel there on the map. I came armed with a bunch of information, so. Three and a half acres.
Yeah, that was my fear. Oftentimes, as a commission, we have seminal moments where we've got to make a really difficult decision. I think this is one of those. I think this goes back to the Bell's Bend decision many, many years ago. Bends are a resource and an asset for our city. And we studied this area extensively in Nashville Next, carefully in Nashville Next. I think this project is too dense. I think we, by current zoning and policy, you can build 126 units and maybe a little bit of commercial on three and a half acres. I think at this point in time, I'm not ready to vote for this. I would probably vote for a deferral. I think this needs far more work with the community, far more work with the development team. So at this point in time, I'll wait and listen to the rest of my commissioners, but I'm supportive of a deferral. Commissioner Clifton?
I was trying to remember, the whole debate reminded me of something else, and I couldn't quite put my finger on it, but I finally realized in the short time I've been back on the commission, it reminded me of one other case that, that I think was a hard one to decide, although I think we basically did the right thing and it was pretty unanimous by the time we finished talking about it. And that was about the area surrounding the road up to Peeler Park up in Madison. It made some sense from a standpoint of planning and professional planning and whatnot. And the more we heard and the more we thought about the sensitive lands, about the situation generally, I think we came to a unanimous decision that this was not the right thing. And that's where I am. I, I've heard it said for a long time that, you know, this is a county which is outgrowing agriculture, it's outgrowing AR2A zoning, that's just a holding pattern. And maybe it is in some parts, but not everything. This is a big county. I don't know, I would like to ask, I am just curious about this from the staff. What percentage, I mean, I know it's been going down, but is, do we think of AR2 zoning as just no longer tenable in the county? I'm not, I mean, as a general, not as, not as a plus here, but what do we think about that?
So what we look at is, and Amelia, maybe you can go to the policy map. Would be helpful. Perfect. So the orange color that's on the screen is T3 Community Center Policy. So a good bit of the portion that, a good bit of the property that is zoned AR2A is within a policy that is telling us it wants to be more. It's in a broad area of community center policy. And so to answer your question is that that community center policy was placed on that AR2A zoned property with Nashville Next and said, this is a commercial concentration, this is a community center. And so for this property, AR2A is likely not appropriate because it's in this larger commercial node of community center. Does that make sense? So not that it's not valuable, but for here, it was, that was the transition.
And Lisa, had this been rural policy, AR2A would be preferred. So we, it's easier for us in rural policy if it is AR2A because that is aligned with that.
So we're not really trying to get rid of all AR2A, but we have seen over the last few years, a dramatic reduction of actual zoning on the ground that is AR2A. And I honestly think we're a large enough county that we need a significant portion of it to remain AR2A for all sorts of reasons. But anyway, that's my current thought about it. I'll listen to everyone else, but I'm unprepared to vote for this. I'd vote for denial or deferral, either one.
Commissioner Hanley?
Thank you.
Chair, I have a lot of, a lot of contemplation on this. And I mean, this has been a very significant way to start off the year. And, you know, I think it's somewhat interesting that, you know, we have had councilmember from adjacent community and a lot of opposition from adjacent communities. And then we have support from the council member and support from the immediately adjacent property owners. And so I think, you know, it's not lost on me the natural significance. I think, you know, the beauty of nature does invoke emotion, and I think that's just something that galvanizes people. And I do have a lot of considerations that I think were brought up as concerns by those who spoke. The impact of the disturbance, I think, is what gives me more of a inclination to want more information. Environmental, archaeology, archaeological, as well as some of the noise impacts. You know, I don't feel it's appropriate to try to inject new concepts into a design that we have here, but I do think there are some opportunities. And what we have on the screen really did influence my thoughts during the presentation. You know, I know we have a lot of people that believe that, you know, when you have a conservation component to a property, that means you don't touch it at all. But I think it's just guiding what the policy of development is. And I do appreciate what was presented by the applicant. It does show they tried to concentrate a lot of things in the area that, again, our Nashville Next plan shows is where that should go. Aside from the restaurant near McGavick Pike, that was one that kind of made me scratch my head. So I will ask a question about how that was derived. I understand McGavick Pike and being a significant corridor and providing amenity that hopefully could serve the community, but I'm curious as to why that wasn't kind of given that push into the, into the, into the orange space that we're seeing on the screen.
Sure. There are some other existing commercial along McGavick Pike. And so when we originally saw the plan, there actually was more intensity along McGavick Pike and within that area of floodplain. And so it was significantly diminished. The idea was that- And so it was significantly diminished. The idea was that there would be sort of a farm-to-table concept, and so you would have it in a location where it would be situated along with some agricultural uses as the setting to, and for the restaurant to utilize. And so they did decrease the amount of disturbance that was shown at McGavick Pike and minimized it from previous plans that we saw.
Okay, that context is helpful. I don't disagree with the thematic approach and likely, and honestly, the pleasure of having that dynamic there are just the appropriateness within the context of the policy that we have. I did hear a lot of comments about environmental impacts, and I think, you know, I know the farmland was considered a historical function, I guess, at this point, but, you know, there's a lot of documentation on farmlands impacts to the environment as well. So I think that's something we should take note of when we think about, you know, as things move away from farmland. But the one thing about the floodplain that I noticed, I do like the greenway, obviously, but I noticed there are no occupant, per se, no occupant uses within the floodplain. And I know one of my fellow commissioners mentioned that you could actually build housing in the floodplain. We heard a lot of concern for the quality of life in the moment that may precede or follow a significant event, a catastrophic event. And so I think, you know, being mindful that, you know, this is a plan that does not put homes in that area, I think, is really important. I think we should understand that that is definitely possible, but it is not what's being proposed here. And I do think we also, I heard a lot about noise, and I think, you know, we just discussed that there may be an appropriateness in this area for a venue that does produce a lot of noise, even if not necessarily in that specific location it's designed, but I do think it could be appropriate. So those are my comments just from listening and responding to some of the things I heard from those who spoke both for and in opposition. So I look forward to hearing from my fellow commissioners as well.
Thank you. Councilman, you want to go next?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the presentation team and to everyone that came out and spoke on this one. This is one that I really enjoyed reading the staff report and learning more about the proposal. I think the staff report indicated to me that a lot of work, thoughtful work had been done on this plan, and the presentation definitely reinforced the thoughtfulness that has gone into the plan at least to date. Do, it is interesting to me that lots of my neighbors, many of whom I know on the Inglewood side of the river, have concerns about folks along, that are more immediately adjacent, have written letters in support or seem to be in support. So that's an interesting predicament to be in a little bit. I do want to ask a question of staff if I can. I know for Councilmember Syracuse and I have been working with metro parks for many, many years now. It seems like to try to get an extension of the greenway that would connect from Two Rivers Park to the Opryland area generally. And I know there are some greenway plans generally along that side of the river. How does that greenway network interact with this site potentially?
So the, along the McGavick, or I'm sorry, along the Pennington Bend frontage, the site would have a greenway or a public access trail, not entirely visible along here, but along that frontage carrying up from the northern, the northwestern portion of the site down into the property.
And then the remainder of that would be sort of in the tree safe area? Is that kind of the general idea?
So one of the things, there's not a, this would not be like an official metro greenway, if you think about it. So Councilmember Syracuse has been working with other property owners, including a multifamily development that's already been built on Pennington Bend to rethink sort of the idea of the sidewalk into a multi-use path, but that it's privately maintained. And so it is a little bit further off of the road. It can be a little bit more curvilinear, not necessarily straight, within a access easement, so it can be utilized by the public, but privately maintained. And so it would be an extension of sort of that, and so it would be, you know, tucked in back behind or weave through some of the tree save area and be an extension of that. And so it's greenway-like without being a metro-maintained greenway. Does that?
No, that's helpful. I appreciate that, because like I said, I know we've been trying to get that connector for several years now, and hopefully could extend it even further out. I mean, overall, I mean, also I want to comment on, you know, I was elected in August of 2015, which was about the exact date when Ascend Amphitheater opened. And so most of my district's experience has been dealing with new noise in the overall East Nashville area and trying to figure that out. And so I definitely empathize with that because it can be, as we have learned, a little bit unpredictable. One of my most famous incidents of tracking noise complaints from Ascend Amphitheaters, we had two shows by the same act on two different days, and the same show with the same decibel reading generated complaints one day, but not the other, even though nothing changed on their end. So sound carry along the waterfront is maybe not something that can be avoided, but it's very difficult to control. So just want to throw that out there for whomever comes next. I definitely think that, you know, as a kid, going to Opryland, surely there probably was a lot more music and kind of noise in that area than there has been in the last, I don't want to say how old I am, but I remember when that closed. But that used to be, I think, a lot more of a feature of that general area of the riverfront than it has been in a long time. And so reintroducing that, I think, actually would honor the heritage of the Music Valley area. But I could see how it would be a new intrusion, maybe to neighbors who are already hearing things from as far away as Ascend Amphitheater. I think for me, overall, what I'm hearing from a lot of my commissioner or fellow commissioners is a desire for a deferral. And I don't think that that's necessarily a bad idea. It's just, I think if we are to do that, and I know Councilmember Syracuse is traveling today, but if we were to do a deferral, I think it might be helpful for the applicants as well as for the community to kind of hone in on what we're looking for. If there's a deferral, about what additional information we are looking for and want to maybe seek changes on. And I defer very heavily to certainly Commissioner Haynes, who's got a lot of experience with the Parks Department. Commissioner Clifton, who's such an expert on environmental things. I think I really look to you for, both of you, for feedback on a lot of these open space and natural habitat preservation efforts that are so critical. And that's just something I'm interested in, but don't have a lot of knowledge in myself. But if we as commissioners were to move for a deferral, I think it'd be helpful for everyone to kind of hone in a little bit on what additional information that we're looking for as a commission in order to make a recommendation to council.
Yeah, Director Kemp is making a list as we get forward. Anything else, Councilman?
That's it for me for now, but thank you.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. I think this is a very ambitious, interesting plan. Looking at the policy, I do understand why staff comes to the conclusion. But at this time, I recommend deferral, and here's why. Because we heard from a district council member from the opposite side, but we did not hear from the district council member who represent this area. And Councilman Syracuse was heavily involved with Nashville Next, so I would like to hear from him the, you know, policy difference, although this is a large chunk of AR2A. But yes, it's close to Brighty Parkway and across from Opryland. So in that sense, maybe, you know, the community at that time decided, although it is AR2A, maybe some development might be appropriate. So I would like to hear the reasoning behind the policy, underlying policy. And also, you know, the interesting thing I thought was typically this type of development, nearby neighbor is the one who raised opposition. But in this case, interestingly, nearby neighbor is pretty much, you know, support of this plan. So I'm thinking maybe they are so traumatized with other, you know, more different type of development. So I would love to hear those history and background, why a councilman or, you know, staff thinks this proposal is more appropriate versus the, you know, previous more aggressive development. And lastly, I would like to hear is 2010 flood, we, everybody was traumatized. And I understand this proposal, the company had some recreational area in other parts of the country or city. And then some of the, you know, their place might be also built in on the floodplain. So I would like to hear what their, you know, flood mitigation and what kind of protocol they have if we want to have those severe weather. Oh, and I also forgot, it was, I think, you know, on our plan, it does not say amphitheater, but concern of the amphitheater noise was, you know, expressed. So I would like to hear a little bit more about the detail of that event and also the architecture and how the sound travel and so forth. So at this point, there's, you know, still lots of unknown, so I would like to hear that. And so also the negotiation with adjacent neighbor to the north. And I know there's negotiation and discussion is ongoing, but before we discuss, we would like to hear an amicable solution between two neighbors. So for those reasons and to hear from district council member directly, I support a deferral.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tibbs.
Actually, I appreciate all of my commissioners. I won't try to repeat the things that have already been said. Can you hear me? Okay. The, I actually was more thinking about a denial initially, and I would be comfortable with that, but I'll also be comfortable with a deferral if that's what is more the consensus. You know, at first I look at, well, I will say this first, though. I do think this is getting, this is closer to the appropriate use for the area, this type of development. I think this type of development, you know, lends itself to a little bit more, you know, if we weren't going to fill it with, you know, retail, commercial, everything. I do think that this is along the lines of something better, for sure. I just feel like, you know, almost even looking at this policy map, I definitely wish that maybe nothing was in the AR, you know, I'll just use colors, the green area, you know, and then, you know, the orange area was the more the developed part. So maybe that's where a deferral would come in, you know, it's maybe kind of pushing more that way. Someone brought up about the, with the trailer area. They do have to hook their, you know, up to the RVs, whatever, up to the sewage area, and where did that go and all that? You know, so there are things I think that lend itself to maybe not being quite as dense in the area that they have shown that's more in the flood zone because, you know, just because of, well, not just because of that, but of things such as that. And I do think that, you know, looking at the policy too of the, you know, undisturbed sense of land features and naturals, I was reading, minimal to protect the water quality and minimize infrastructure and public service costs. Like, to me, that's both of them. That's why this is the type of development that we're, but it's also the reason why I don't think this is a good place for this much, you know, density and this much things that are going into it, just to continue to preserve, you know, I'm reading, the unique environmental diversity of this area. So, you know, I would have been comfortable if we did deny it, but I, you know, deferral based off of all the comments, I think that, you know, Director Kemp has been putting together here, I'd be comfortable with that coming back. But I do think there needs to be some real sensitivity to this area, this bend is, which was said initially, that, you know, we don't have a lot of these, and there is a specialness to this. I don't, I do, you know, I'm okay with, and I'm sure everybody is, the Brooly Parkway part of the development. I believe amphitheater is on that side, so I wasn't as necessarily as much about the amphitheater, but it's more about that transition back. I think that it's a very special, unique area. And I think there could be, I think it could be worked out, so maybe a deferral would work out good, but, you know, that's kind of where I landed.
Thank you, Commissioner Tibbs, and back to you, Chairman Lawson. Anything else to add?
After listening to my fellow commissioners, I don't think there's anything I can constructively add to that. And I do think that as we move forward and if a decision is reached to do a deferral, that we want to make sure we are explicit to the staff of what we expect out of that deferral. On many of the cases that we've heard tonight and in the past, I'll interject this, and it may not be appropriate for this particular one, but it just seems like we're moving in an area where we need to start considering complimentary meetings and adjustments to either Nashville Next or a complete redo. Because in some areas, it's seven, eight, nine years old. We are seeing rapid growth development in this city, and we're also doing, seeing what I call grabbing and bag properties, particularly AR2A properties, for developments across our county that to me kind to put us in a position that we're losing what we had spent a lot of time with our community in developing. So I would, I would support what the general recommendation that we do with a deferral. I don't know how long a deferral we would look for. Maybe some guidance from Lucy would help us, but certainly at least minimum two weeks indefinitely comes to mind. But no, nobody wants that.
Thank you.
Nobody likes that one.
Thank you, Chairman. I think we do have, so Director Kemp has got a list of items, and we need to ask a few questions about whether the council bill's been filed and where we are and the status of that, don't we, Director?
Chairman. Oh, I can ask one quick thing.
Yeah, Commissioner Haynes.
Someone mentioned the First Bank Amphitheater in Thompson Station. And I've had many friends go there, and it has been a disaster leaving that amphitheater. I think we need to be careful in how we study that. What we don't need is to end up with the same problems from an amphitheater perspective. So both the noise projecting north and the traffic getting out needs to be more carefully studied.
Very good discussion. All right, Director.
So Chair, shall I go through the list that I have and then my recommendation for the deferral date, just to get us started with that?
Absolutely, yes.
So I'll go through it. Let me know if there's anything that I've missed. I heard several comments that I think would suggest the commission may not support the project if they're not successfully addressed. It's important for the applicant to hear this, about the density of the site and it being too much, the intensity. And then also relating the density and intensity to things like sewage and infrastructure and the like. I heard a question about the farm-to-table restaurant and its placement in conservation. The access questions to the floodplain for a desire to hear from Councilman Syracuse, in particularly wanting to understand the reason for the existing underlying policy, which is CC, it's a, it's a, not an intense commercial policy, but it supports commercial development, wanting to understand why that was the policy we landed on during Nashville Next. We'll also recommend having community plan staff provide that by memo or presentation. Also want to understand why this proposal has been more appropriate than other recommendations or other proposals for the site or in the area. That's five. Six is protocol for the flood mitigation or the flood, in the event of a flood event, how would the evacuation work? Several questions. Seven about the amphitheater, information about the architecture and the sound studies associated with it, and then also access to it from Commissioner Haynes. And what does that access plan look? And what does that access plan look like? Uh, eight is understanding relationship between this property and the uh neighbor to the north. Um, and Chair, I think I I got all of those. But if if you wanted to ask the commissioners if I missed any.
Yeah, I I think somebody mentioned an archaeological study.
Yes, thank you.
I do think that would be critical.
Thank you.
Uh, on this old piece of property.
Yes. So there are, there are architect or standards for archaeology that are required across the board. But I want to make sure that that information is clear uh both for the public who are of interest. We're committed to that, I agree. And I will list that as something that we need to clarify. Um, and given that list, Chair, our advice, there is no bill introduced. And so we have some flexibility on the timing. So we would recommend a deferral to February of twenty two, twenty three. Lisa, that's the second, um, that's the second meeting in February. And if we aren't through all of the items, we'll work with the applicant to get that done. But at a minimum, I would start there with this vote. That's my recommendation.
Thank you, Director. I, are are there any other items for the list? And then we'll get to the defer. So I think it's a pretty comprehensive list. Um, and uh it's going to take at least that much time. So the the staff thinks they can uh work on that with applicant and the neighbors uh over for the second meeting of February. So we need a motion to defer the second meet- meeting of February with the intent to answer uh those particular, or get more information and answer those questions. There's a motion. Is there a second? Second, any other discussion for two me- for deferring to the second meeting in February? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. If there's no, ayes have it, and it's deferred to the second meeting in February. All right, so Commissioners, that leaves us um with three items. I'd like to get through one more item and then we can take a break. Um, I know we is that okay with the Commissioners? We'll let everybody leave in the next thirty seconds. Is that okay? So the next item.
Chair, this is Amelia also, so she needs to grab her other folder.
Absolutely, yeah. So Commissioners, the next item is item thirty five. We're putting Amelia to work tonight. We'll let everybody leave because it's kind of loud. If everybody could quickly exit. Thank you.
We said thirty five.
Yeah, um, sir, sir. Sir.
You said thirty five?
Yeah, we're on item thirty five, Commissioners, for the presentation. Amelia, go ahead. If everybody could take the conversation outside. We want to make sure we can all hear. We we appreciate it. All right.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Um, Amelia Lewis presenting item thirty five tonight. Um, the request is to apply a neighborhood conservation overlay district. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Um, the area um for the overlay is shown on the screen um with the parcels highlighted in gray. Um, the area is comprised of several properties along Young's Lane and Lathan Court. The properties have been primarily developed with a single family residential uses, um, some vacant properties and some uh one and two family residential uses as well. Um, so the neighborhood conservation overlay, what is it? Um, these districts are defined as geographical areas which possess a significant concentration linkage or continuity of sites, buildings, structures or objects which are united by past events um or aesthetically by plan or physical development um meeting several different criteria um which can be found in the report and also on the screen. But I won't go, I won't read through them all. Um, so the metric, the Metro Historic Zoning Commission um considered this application at its November meeting in twenty twenty two. Um, the Historic Zoning Commission um recommended approval of this application. Um, just to briefly summarize um the report, um, Lathan Court, a short dead-end street in North Nashville, and portions of Young's Lane are significant for a connection to the development of North Nashville by the African-American community and how it reflects the growing middle to upper-class black community of the nineteen sixties and nineteen seventies. Um, so there are a couple of policies on the site um off of Lathan Court, um, which is the cul-de-sac uh to the south of Young's Lane. Um, the policy is urban neighborhood maintenance. Um, and the policy that's shown in the stripe is uh urban residential corridor. Um, as well as some portions of urban mixed-use corridors. So in general, most of our policies um are supportive of historic overlays, um especially um the neighborhood maintenance policy on the site. Um, staff's recommendation is to approve.
Thank you, Amelia. So we will open this item for public hearing. And the applicant is the council lady, Council Lady Tibbs. You come on up and um you're the applicant, so give you as much time as you need. Thank you for sticking around.
Completely forgot about that part. I'm glad I didn't leave. Um, so as I stated um earlier, um, part of my desire as a councilperson of District Two is to lead smart development. And and part of smart development includes preserving established and historic neighborhoods. And there are quite a few in District Two. District Two is a majority African-American district. Um, there are a lot of neighborhoods um that back in the fifties and sixties were the only places that African-Americans were allowed to own homes. Uh, one of those first neighborhoods um is Young's Lane and and the the homes that developed along Young's Lane, Lathan Court. Um, there are historic institutions in the area, American Baptist College. You've got F. H. Jenkins Private School. Um, you've got Riverside Hospital. You've got Riverside Seventh uh Day Adventist uh Church. Um, Born Again Church, all African-American institutions that have contributed to that. You know, um, the black middle class in Nashville. Um, the Lathan Court residents are the ones that reached out to me about wanting to do a historical overlay. Um, and I I'm supporting them in in doing that overlay. There are some properties on Young's Lane that do qualify uh under the guidelines uh under the Historical Commission's guidelines. And so that's why those properties are also included in the overlay and that was approved by the Historical Commission. Uh, my desire is to keep all of the properties. I know that there is at least one homeowner on Young's Lane who does not want to be in the historical um overlay. Um, and my preference is for you, the commission, to approve as is. And then as the councilperson, once the bill comes over, I can amend it if needed um to remove that property. Um, I I think that some of the consternation sometimes with historical overlays, people think that it um brings down their property value. There's no data that supports that. Uh, some folks feel like it um hinders um development. Young's Lane is a quiet neighborhood. It's been a quiet neighborhood for decades. Um, there, there's lots of development. It's right um behind or parallel to Trinity, West Trinity Lane, where there is a lot of development, but it's still residential development. There's been some development on Young's Lane. It's for the most part mostly developed, and that's been townhomes. Um, there is a proposed development that's not far away. Um, that may have some impact on Young's Lane. But there is no, there are no immediate plans to make Young's Lane any more dense than it already is. Um, and so that's why I'm supporting this historical overlay. It it goes with my platform to protect um historic and established neighborhoods. And so I'd ask you all to approve it. And again, uh, if there continues to be an issue, please allow me to amend the bill as the councilperson. Um, but approve it as is at your stage.
Thank you, Council Lady.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. All right. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Come on up. And uh, remember, you've got two minutes and the timer's right there. And just state your name and address. Appreciate you coming down.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, my name is Eugene Smith. I'm at nineteen oh eight Lathan Court. I'm actually on the road or street where the uh overlay would be. Um, I just want to read some things to you. Uh, as a resident, we are blessed and proud to be in an area where our parents and grandparents worked hard, especially in all of their adversities to create family life in the sixties, when we as African-American race were at a disadvantage. Now, we are aware the area is being viewed by developers' prime real estate market. Um, I just want to say that from the heart, that um I was raised in the home. I moved away. I'm in the military, been in the military forty-one years. Um, and coming back to the neighborhood, just understanding what my parents put into the area to create what is there now. I just want to say I'm I'm all for the overlay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Come on up. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Vessia Johnson, and I also live on Lathan Court, one nine oh seven. My parents bought that home when I was three years old. Um, grew up, moved away to Laverne. My sibling is in Georgia. Uh, my parents are both now deceased. The house was left to me and my sister. Well, my husband and I decided to buy her out and we moved back into the family home. And that is what I did. Um, my parents worked hard for this home. Uh, the area is kept up just greatly nicely. The structures of the houses are great. I'm asking that you please, please, let us have it as the historical overlay. That is our home. That means a lot to us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Come on up. Welcome.
Good evening. Um, my name is Jamie Hancock. I live at nineteen hundred Lathan Court. Uh, I can also speak for the person in nineteen oh two. Don't want to, but that's, that is where my grandfather resides. My uncle still lives there with his family. And uh my father um lived right beside his dad. So I have my, I have this home because my father passed away. And I moved back uh in seventeen to help take care of my my um, my dad. But um, most of all, for me, the the historical overlay would mean a lot to me because of the way that the the community looks and how it makes me feel when I come through there. Uh, I too moved away and have grown kids and all of it. So uh, but from the beginning of Young's Lane all the way to the other end of Young's Lane, I feel like that's my neighborhood. Free Silver and Roy Street, Alice, really, all of my neighborhood. Because um it, we're spread out and everything, different roads. But I literally know and have went down one end to the other. And I felt safe when I, when I would at least get to Young's Lane. I have a free silver too. Some some houses down there, some people would know me. But my grandparents were professionals. You know, my grandfather, he was a doctor. My grandmother was a nurse. And my father was a mortician. My grandmother also a mortician on um a funeral home on White's Creek Pike, not far from where we live. And um, so it just means a lot to kind of keep what we have there uh the way that it is. And um, it's hard to understand when you're a new person coming in the neighborhood, no shade. Uh, but it is very important to us. So I too would love for you guys to approve the overlay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? I'll make sure we get everybody. Okay, seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up.
I'm kind of half and half. So uh, my name is Chris Coke. Uh, my wife and I um own the home at eight twenty-nine Young's Lane, which is within the proposed conservation overlay. Um, and I have several objections to the appropriateness of including Young's Lane specifically in this overlay. Um, I've spoken with the families that are in attendance here from Lathan Court uh who proposed the overlay. And I understand and support if they want to preserve the current homes and building options uh there on that street with smaller lot sizes. But to include ten parcel section of Young's Lane, which is a one-mile-long, double-yellow-lined city connector avenue, um does not make sense to me. Uh, furthermore, I've learned that no property owners on Young's Lane ask to be included in this overlay. Um, and and according to the families on Lathan Court, no property owners on Lathan Court asked for Young's Lane to be included. Um, the owners of Lathan Court are focused on preserving the homes on Lathan Court. So why is nearly seventy percent of this overlay in an area that no property owner asked for? Um, and of the two parcel, of the ten parcels, two of them are raw land, which total three and a half acres. What structure are we conserving uh there? Um, the parcels in this overlay on Young's Lane are on much larger acreage. Uh, one acre, one point one four acre, one and a quarter acre, and two point two acres are four of these ten parcels. The land use designation on Young's Lane, um as the councilwoman noted, is a T four residential corridor and T four mixed use. The neighborhood maintenance portion is Lathan Court, which is appropriate. Um, that land use designation was born from the Haines Trinity Community Development Plan, which was a result of the two thousand seventeen uh community charrette meetings, which I attended. And the community asked then for development from West Trinity Lane, south to the river, conservation and maintenance, north of West Trinity Lane. Lathan Court received a neighborhood maintenance designation at that time because of it, the appropriateness of that for that specific street. So I support the overlay for Lathan Court, but I ask for the overlay to be removed from Young's Lane. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Council Lady, you want to wrap it up, rebuttal? And then uh we'll do deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I will point out of the parcels on uh Young's Lane and and there have been several community meetings where notices went out to all the property owners. There's only been one objection from one property owner on Young's Lane. Um, I will say, and and I heard um mention of it in your previous deliberations. Um, there's, we do have Nashville Next. We do have the Haines Trinity Small Area Plan. I will say that what is in those plans and what my residents are actually seeing, there's some hesitation there. Um, it's it's one thing to put certain land use policies on a piece of paper. And there's another thing to see the development that matches up with those land use policies. Um, again, my platform and what I hear from my constituents is that they want to protect their neighborhoods. They want to protect the history of the area. They don't want, they they're okay with development. That's why I say smart development. They're okay with development, but they don't want development that's overwhelming, that erases the history of the area. And so the the purpose of this overlay is to preserve the history of Young's Lane, of Lathan Court. I I mentioned the institutions that are in that area that have contributed to um the black middle class in in that area. It's a very important part of town. Uh, yes, Young's Lane is a yellow stripe connector street, but it's a two-lane road. It's small. The neighborhood is, again, is all residential. There are no plans to make Young's Lane any more, any busier than what it already is or to make that area more dense than it already is, because that's not what the community wants. And I've had dozens of community meetings. Uh, so I'm very well aware of of what constituents in the area uh feel about the area, particularly folks who've been there their entire lives. So once again, I ask that you approve the overlay as presented uh as the Historical Commission has done. If there is a need to remove a parcel, I can do that on the council end uh once the bill gets, comes over. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lady. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. And um, so just Commissioners, I don't want to address it during this case, but um at the end of the um commission meeting, I think we can, I would like to just kind of give you an update on some thoughts about Nashville Next and kind of where we are as a department. I think it will come to uh, and we can discuss that at the very end. And I think it will put several of you at ease because it's come up several, several times tonight. So we'll address that um at the end of the meeting, the Director and I. Um, but as far as this particular case, I do know that might help in our deliberation that Robin, Robin Ziegler's here with the historic, just to say why. I think it would help to why all these lots were included. Robin, could you come up and just, I think it would help us before the deliberation? Okay. She's addressed us before. Oh, yeah, come over here, Robin. Yeah. Mike, slide. Yep.
Hi, I'm Robin Ziegler. I'm the Historic Zoning Commission, uh Historic Zoning Administrator for the Commission. And thank you for sharing Commissioner Johnson with us. Um, the properties on Young's Lane from a historic standpoint are very similar to what you see on Lathan Court. They're the same architect uh forms. They're the same architect, uh, forms, styles that you see on Lathan and the same development period. So for that reason, we thought that they did qualify. And the beauty of it is, of course, you know that an overlay means that it's over top of the existing zoning, so it's not changing development rights. And the beauty of it is from a design perspective, we're following design guidelines rather than hard and fast rules. So you can see there's some really unusual shaped lots, some very deep lots, a T shaped lot on Young's Lane. And so we'll be able to apply those guidelines specifically to those lots.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then if we have more questions, Robin, we'll call you up. Yep, perfect. All right. Um, Commissioner Blackshire, you want to go first? You're back.
Um, well, I think this looks um, like a great idea to me. I um, am familiar with the area, thought it was um, I thought what the neighbors were saying on Lathan Court made a lot of sense. I wasn't intrigued by what the neighbor on Young's Lane had to say because obviously it is um, a little different, although there's a clear nexus. Uh, there's a little nexus, right, between Young's Lane and um, Lathan Court. And what um, Ms. Ziegler said made a lot of sense about the design and obviously there being a connection both not only geographically, but in form of the houses. So I would be in support of this um, item and um, I take council lady at her word to the extent it makes sense to remove any parcels. She will consider that as it goes to council.
Commissioner Tibbs?
I also support this overlay. Um, I do think that some, these pockets, being able to conserve it, these communities are important and the community coming out to be, um, supporting that. Uh, I agree with uh, you know, the unique characteristics of not just the lot sizes, but also the, these homes, I think is, will be uh, an interesting thing that we are able to keep and maintain. And um, you know, like Billy and said, I do, you know, the commis, I trust the council person will work at council to work with any lots that might need to be uh, removed at that time.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Robin, uh, being here and providing uh, background for uh, the reason behind uh, Historic Zoning Commission point of uh, approval. And I also want to thank ladies, uh, you came to the Historic Zoning Commission and shared with us very heartwarming family history and you've done again, I really appreciate that. So uh, uh, in November, we uh, Metro Historic Zoning Commission discussed and at the same time, uh, there was one objection from the one property owner from the Young's Lane uh, came up. But uh, stated by uh, Robin, uh, Ms. Ziegler, because of the architecture and the style is uh, very similar with a Lathan Court, so we felt very comfortable uh, supporting both Lathan Court and Young's Lane. So I am still at the same uh, position. I fully support uh, neighborhood conservation overlay in both uh, street.
Councilman.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the two commissioners to my right, who have also been Historic Zoning Commissioners. Um, I think when you look at this uh, at, from an aerial perspective, uh, it, it really helps to make sense of what's going on in the street. When you go down Young's Lane off of White's Creek, it, 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 there's a lot of kind of different things going on, but I think this aerial really helps to show that you have this little residential kind of subdivision node in the midst of much larger kind of institutional uses or things like that and, and why uh, it, it is a unique pocket that really is at the center of Young's Lane. And uh, certainly when you go uh, further to the west, there, there is a lot more intense development that's happened um, with a lot of townhomes and that, we do need that density in places, but it's kind of a miracle that uh, that this area is intact as it is. Um, I think uh, one of the things I noticed as well is from the Historic Zoning Commission report that there was flooding and that a lot of these houses were um, repaired uh, even from some of that damage. And uh, it's obvious that people have taken a lot of care uh, to, to keep the houses more or less the way that they were and, and that's, that's a great thing. Um, one of the things too that I think the gentleman mentioned about Young's Lane is that it's uh, does have a double yellow line and it's a collector. Even in very dense areas like let's say Lockland Springs, you would have Fourteenth Street or Sixteenth Street are collector streets and they have double yellow lines and we still have conservation overlays on them. Uh, and that helps to preserve the houses uh, with, uh, I would say that uh, with, for Young's Lane itself, if there is a different policy that does support mixed uses, sometimes one of the things that that can enable is maybe an SP or, or some other sort of a, a land use where you can, you can change the use uh, of a, of a property, but still maintain the structure or have outbuildings or things that, that complement the, the historic nature. And having those design guidelines in place actually allows a little bit of flexibility there that you could change use on, if the policy supports it and if the neighbors support it and still have a lot of design guidance. So I, I, I think we found that to be very helpful in a lot of our historic neighborhoods too. Just uh, if I, if I may, just wanted to read a, a couple of sentences uh, maybe about Young's Lane uh, in the very detailed staff report. Um, uh, one of the paragraphs says that residents of the area were active in local politics, volunteer work and civic duties. There is an, I will probably not pronounce this correctly, but Air Ray Acklin, who owned eight oh one and eight, eight oh three Young's Lane, her husband Theodore Acklin played semi-professional baseball in the National Black League in the nineteen thirties. He opened El Morocco nightclub on Jefferson Street as a sophomore at what is today Tennessee State. Um, some of the other properties on Young's Lane specifically um, also appear to have belonged to Preston Leon and Florence Taylor. So um, the, the houses themselves uh, are, are one thing, but that connection to people who have been of such tremendous importance to Nashville's history as a whole and especially in the African American community, I think really warrants certainly at this uh, commission, uh, considering the request to preserve them and look forward to council member Tooms uh, continuing the conversation, but I'm in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Commissioner Hanley.
Thank you, Chair, and, and also I, I appreciate the council member for, for reading that off. I think, you know, for me, that was, when I, when I saw this on our agenda, um, I was glad to see that there was this effort that was coming for us. Uh, I grew, I grew up in the neighborhood and, and a lot of the history of the neighborhood is, is before my time, but I did have uh, generations before me that, that made sure that I knew about the history of the neighborhood. Um, and I think while we heard from, from some of the current uh, landowners there, that was, that was great to see and the appropriateness of, I think, um, you know, the properties that, that face Young's Lane, I, I knew that would probably come up just because when you look at it on the screen or when you look at it on, on, on paper, you know, the, the shape of the lots is a little, little different, a little odd and maybe not your, your traditional, I guess that I would say, um, historic overlay. Um, but for me, the context of, of the community, the history, but also just because the corridor has um, what I would say, an institutional dynamic to it that I don't think you really understand unless you drive through there um, with the school and the church um, and other religious and faith-based institutions. And so for me, and for as long as I've known the area, that's been a reverence for, for that area. And so I, I, I support and I understand the context that, that the council member Tooms presented to us.
Thank you, Ken. All right, commi, Commissioner Clifton, you're up.
Well, I'm privileged to live in an area that, that uh, that contains Belmont Hillsborough and Hillsborough West End and uh, in the center of the eighteen district, Nashville's best council district, as you recall. Um, but we have historic, uh, we have conservation overlays and it's something I didn't realize uh, because we uh, until I kind of was on the Neighborhood Association Board and kind of asked some questions, but uh, there are guidelines. I mean, it's not that uh, you have to mimic everything, like if you, if your house burns down uh, and you're in the district, you know, you have to follow certain broad guidelines. It's, it doesn't have to mimic anything, but I think I'm right, um, Ms. Camro, that, that, that works pretty well. I mean, it's a neighborhood that has Blair, Natchez Trace, Belmont Boulevard, it works. Um, on small and large streets, so it's just a matter of, of uh, I think it's a great idea, but, but I, I, I think the real, it's more a political issue than anything else. And from a planning issue, I think it's, it's certainly something we should support as, as is without a number.
Commissioner Haynes.
No comments.
Chairman.
Well, some people wanted to apply the historic overlay on me since I'm the oldest one on this commission, that is.
I wasn't going to mention it.
Um, yes, you were. Yes, you were. Uh, it is, you know, I think it's very appropriate. Um, I, I, I don't, I can't uh, see any need to really uh, reiterate what my fellow commissioners have, have said because they see the value of it and I would support a motion to approve staff recommendation.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? There's a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Peas no, ayes have it and staff recommendations to approve. Thank you. All right, commissioners, I think we've been here almost three hours, so we probably need to take a break and then we can finish up because I do want to talk a little bit about Nashville next, uh, and I don't, I don't want, I, it's an important upcoming thing. So let's take a quick ten minute break or so. So thank you for allowing us to take a little break. Uh, we really appreciate that. Means a lot. Um, as volunteers, we, we uh, I can't thank you enough for the amount of time you guys give us on, on a Thursday night. So thank you, thank you. All right, so we are on to item thirty-nine. And on this particular item, I think this is your first time presenting it, isn't it?
It is.
We won't give you too hard a time, I promise. Okay, I did, I, you know, we'll see how you do. We'll critique after.
For sure.
Okay. I, you know, the first time you do it, we got to make it a little bit nervous. All right, go ahead.
Uh, good evening, uh, commissioners. My name's Loslo Martin. I'll be presenting item thirty-nine. The request is to rezone from uh, zoning district RS forty to CS Commercial Service. Staff recommendation is to disapprove. The request consists of ten parcels totaling approximately seventy-six, seventy-seven acres in size located on the eastern side of White's Creek Pike. The subject properties contain single-family homes as well as vacant rural land. Surrounding properties are zoned RS fifteen, RS forty, and an SP to the south that was approved in twenty twenty, allowing a mix of uses. The properties are located within the conservation, rural maintenance and rural neighborhood center policies. The intent of conservation policy is to preserve and enhance environmental, environmentally sensitive land, while the intent of rural maintenance is to preserve the general character of rural neighborhoods. The proposed CS zoning would allow for a range of commercial uses, including retail trade, consumer services, automobile sales, restaurants, entertainment and financial institutions. The community character manual does not list CS as an appropriate zoning under the, the T two rural maintenance policy. Additionally, there are problem soils associated with a large portion of the site as you move farther east of White's Creek Pike. This is indicated by the conservation policy on the site. Land intensive uses such as those permitted in the CS zoning district do not align with the conservation policy for the area and the guidance provided by Nashville Next for T two. In conclusion, the CS zoning district is not supported by the various policies for the subject properties and therefore staff recommends disapproval.
Thank you, and we'll open this item for public hearing. And Councilman, I see you back there, so we'll get you uh, last and so we'll follow our normal procedure. So we'll open the item for public hearing and so is the applicant in the room? Come on up, welcome, and you have ten minutes and if you.
Thank you for your time. I'm Don Collins, civil engineer with TTL and Connor. He's also an engineer and so we want to reserve two minutes for rebuttal. And so our, our uh, notes tonight really refer on, on four items. Of course you have the ten parcels that are shown, they're really, it's on the uh, policy areas that's being uh, reflected as Mr. Martin has, has read. The conservation, so Connor, if you can, if you can flip to uh, the conservation here is really, is based on the consideration of, of environmental features being steep slopes, flood plains, floodways, wetlands, other hydraulic regulatory features and problem soils. On this site, uh, this is a rolling terrain site. There's no steep slopes. Terrain is around five percent. Uh, there are a couple of man-made farm ponds, but otherwise there's no regulatory hydraulic features. And so the conservation uh, here is really, is based on problem soils. So TTL is a pretty, uh, we have a substantial geotechnical um, practice and so we have looked at the soil conditions on this site. And so in, in, in reflection to the area that surrounds it as well, so Connor, if you could go to the, to the, to the back, next slide. So the conservation area maps exactly on what the problem soil area is on this site. If you, if you look, the, the problem soil um, has, is also prevalent along South of I twenty-four, along White's Creek Pike. On other um, sites that have been zoned commercially, they have been allowed to develop. If you'll go to the last slide, uh, Connor. So we, uh, and as part of our investigation and site review, uh, this is an area south of twenty-four that is uh, a lot of CS zoning with neighborhood services that has the same soil profile that have been allowed to have developments developed over the past few years, including a new O'Reilly's uh, that opened last year. And so as designers, we, we come across this on a number of parcels across middle Tennessee. And so as part of our work, uh, you were handed tonight and also emailed earlier this week, our comment response to the staff report that shows a study that TTL, our geotechnical engineers did, uh, the development potential of this soil profile and what we found as reviewing the uh, Davidson County Soil Survey and other uh, open source information that this uh, soil profile is not development prohibitive. And so uh, we do address this type of weak soils through undercutting.
Sir. Talk into the microphone. Yeah, we get, there we go.
So we do, we do encounter this fairly frequently and we do um, address these type soil conditions on a number of de, development uh, projects. And so what we found as part of our review from a geotechnical perspective is that uh, these soil conditions, while shown on the conservation, do not, are not development, developmentally prohibitive. But also um, two other policy areas, the neighborhood center, um, if you go to the conservation, conservation map, um, the neighborhood center is adjacent to an SP that was approved two years ago. And so I guess really the essence of our applicants is requesting is two things. If you, if you can overcome the thought of the soils being able to be addressed during engineering uh, controls is with the proximity to I twenty-four and front along White's Creek Pike, can neighborhood center policy area be expanded to allow those neighborhood services that are in the SP that was approved? Uh, the neighborhood, the SP is centered on a policy area that was um, neighborhood center. And then also as we go north along White's Creek Pike, can we be allowed to transition down to the single-family uh, type development that is north of our site and to the west? And so um, I guess in, in summary, that we, we feel that with proximity to I twenty-four and on this White's Creek corridor, that if the um, policy were able to be expanded on neighborhood center to label, to allow those neighborhood type services that you see south of twenty-four and then allowed to be transitioned from commercial down to residential to match a single-family that's north and to the west of us, uh, I believe that this would, it can be a site that can be successfully developed. Much like, there's, there's, there really the conditions uh, north of the interstate are very similar to the south, other than uh, this hasn't been allowed to move forward. But also um, the applicant has conducted significant community outreach. Uh, he's had five community meetings, um, advertisements in the local media, hip joltin' and has, and done a lot of door knocking in the community and has rel, has received a lot of community support for more commercial services in this area, specifically on this property, proximity to twenty-four. And then also very limited opposition. And so with that being said, I'd like uh, Mr. uh, Jakes to say a few words.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Kenneth Jakes.
My name is Kenneth Jakes. I live at 5920 Clarksville Pike, Jolton, Tennessee. And as you've already heard, this soil is the same soil that's been on the left-hand side of the interstate completely developed. Not, not partially, completely. The right-hand side of the road, the left-hand side of the road. CS, what I'm asking for. Across the street is commercial. Right in front of my property, the Planning Commission in 2020 approved it for a four-story hotel, a gas station, a market. You know, we're talking zoning here, but I can do the same thing on CS zoning that they were just approved for. We're not really talking zoning. We're talking land use policies for people. Listen, the people that developed all this infrastructure and commercial business on the left side of the interstate is fully developed now. Every one of them went through the same process I'm going through. They came before the Planning Commission. They went before the Metro Council. And the Metro Council and the Planning Commission said at the time, it was the right thing to do. My daddy always told me, right and wrong don't never change. That's the same soil that's been there for millions of years. If it was right for them to put in their commercial development on the same type soil that you just heard is developable soil, then I don't think I should be restricted. It's just, any way you look at this, it's, we're, we're talking about land uses. I can do everything on my zoning that they did on the other side of the interstate, across the street and right in front of my property. I'm on, let's see, I got a few more minutes just, because I do want to keep my two-minute rebuttal. I've held five community meetings.
Mr. Jakes, if you want to take a two-minute rebuttal, you gotta stop now.
Okay, I'll stop.
Thank you. Thank you. Just want to be clear. I don't want confusion. Thank you, Mr. Jakes. All right. Anyone wishing to speak in support of the project? Come on up. Bless you. Two minutes, and please state your name and dress.
Chris Baum, I live on 5050 Rawlings Road, also in Jolton. I just wanted to come and show support for Mr. Ken. Since beginning, like they've said, since beginning, he's been very apparent and upfront with the whole community. You know, reaching out to us on the Facebook pages and the, in the local media, and just being honest with what he wants to do with the space. I think it would benefit the whole community of Jolton in general. It's a main thoroughfare between Nashville and Clarksville with not really much in between. So I think if you were to able to develop it as commercial property, we could bring in some restaurants, some much-needed grocery stores, you know, maybe hardware stores, things like that. I think it could just overall benefit the whole community if we were able to, you know, if indeed the soil is developable, like they're saying, then absolutely, you know, allow Mr. Ken to develop it as, as he sees fit. I think he's a lifetime Jolton resident. I think him, you know, above other people who are just moving to the area or are traveling through, he would know maybe what's best for the community hand in hand with us who live in Jolton as well. So thank you guys for the time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Come on up.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Jerry Strange. I live at 6576 Clarksville Pike. I'm here in support of this zone request. I've been in Jolton, like Bart Durham, over 40 years. So I plan, I plan on staying there. And I think what Mr. Jakes is trying to do is going to be good development for our area. I think it's things that we need, can use, and will help the community. Like the young man just said, we're kind of the last frontier and we're a corridor between Nashville and Clarksville. We can pick up Pleasant View, stuff out of Chatham County, Robertson County, bring in tax dollars to Davidson County. So I'd ask you folks to support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? All right, seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. Welcome.
My name's Mark James. I live at 2911 Morgan Road, about 2,500 feet the way the crow flies. I'm here with my wife. We have two pieces of property there next, in that same area. We got a couple of other folks here. I think it's gonna come up and speak. So first of all, we'll thank all you folks and the staffers for everything that you do. Mr. Jakes has had overwhelming support, no doubt about it. But this support has been to bring in a grocery store, restaurants, and a pharmacy. So, and that's what triggered a lot of the support. Every, you can go up there, people that's moved in recently. Why don't y'all have grocery store? One out of Kroger. So yes, he has that support. But there's 75 other permitted businesses, which is bars and nightclubs and adult-type entertainment, and not a bowling alley. That's, that's not under the adult that I'm talking about. But liquor stores, I mean, there's more than just restaurants that is allowed that if council approves this in the end, and when that gavel hits, 75 of these can be started construction the next day. When you go into the permitted with conditions, there's about another 25 that can be done. So there's more to this than just grocery store and restaurant. And backing up about the pharmacy, we can kind of take that off the list at this point because we just had another pharmacy to open up this week. So we don't need one now. It's already there. And, and by the way, it did open up on property that, that vacant property that's already there, and we still have a lot of other vacant property there that's, some developed, some is undeveloped, some CL. It's SCC. We've got all kinds of stuff that's never been developed yet. So by stretching out more and more and more, I mean, this exit's going to become a nightmare of hotels and everything else. So with that being said.
Thank you, sir. Your two minutes is, is up.
Oh, I'm done? Man, that was quick.
Time flies when you're having fun at the planning commission. Yes, sir. Yeah. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to introduce committee members. My name is Gary Moore. I live at 2946 Morgan Road, Jolton, Tennessee. I'm a lifelong resident of Davidson County. However, I am new to Jolton. I've only lived there 46 years, 36 of those years in the same place, my address that I just gave you. So as you can see, I've been actively involved in the Jolton community for a long time. I know for a fact that a lot of money, community involvement, and of course, hard work had been put into creating the Nashville Next Plan. And I am glad to say that I'm familiar with some people from Jolton that had extensive input in that. It was very clear what the people of Jolton wanted. They wanted the community involvement, of course, and the hard work paid off because they got what they were asking for. And that was what the staff has recommended, that is T2 and Rule. And it provides, the policy is very clear. And I think you guys are bound to go by the policy. And it's my understanding that, I'm getting off course here a little bit, but my understanding is a lot of policy changes that's going on. I think at one point, this committee, this commission, needs to step back and reevaluate the whole Nashville Next Plan. But let me get back on track here. We asked you to, we asked Ken Jakes to consider an SP, where he could put specific stuff on there. And he was adamantly against that. He said it was CS or nothing. So then we come back and ask if he would make it an exclusionary SP, exclude the liquor stores and certain other things that the community would not want. Again, he said no. So again, I concur with the staff recommendation. And I would close by saying this, it's one thing to zone something CS, where you're talking five acres or so, but to zone 77 acres CS is ridiculous. And in my opinion. I thank you for your consideration, and I hope that you will do your staff's recommendation and vote this down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Make sure that we get everybody. All right, seeing none, two-minute rebuttal. And then we'll get the councilman.
I thank you for your time again, Commissioners. You know, this land is by the interstate. And if land by the interstate exit is not commercially potential property, the one in Davidson County is, this is not farmland anymore. This is developable land. And yes, they did ask me would I do an SP. And a lot of y'all don't know me, but I ran for the council three times. And the reason I ran all three times was I was fighting SP zoning. And I'm not going to be a hypocrite and fight it as hard as I have and say, oh, and by the way, give me SP zoning. I've seen SP zoning misuse many, many times. I have requested CS Commercial Services because it gives me the opportunity to approach buyers that I feel rock, that would be beneficial to the community. I'm a, I have a vested interest in that community. I have a home in, in that community. I have land that I own in that community. And I want to see what's best for Jolton. This is, this to me is, goes well beyond anything about money, folks. This has been my whole life, Jolton. I've, I've lived in Jolton since I played Pee-wee baseball. And I don't know what the age limit is, but it's pretty young. So I would ask you this. Ask each one of you the same question. If you own the land by the interstate exit, and all around you was commercial, would you expect yours to be commercial and be given the same opportunity as every single person? And I have overwhelming support. I've held five community meetings, and people have told me, this is the way people should get zoning passed. You're keeping us informed. Listen, I stay up to 1:30 every night just to answer an email. Nobody in Jolton can say I don't return messages. Because I've, if it's 2 o'clock in the morning, I'll stay up till I get the last one answered. And I have support because of that. And I'm asking for your support. And I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman. Welcome.
Good evening, good evening, good evening.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New.
As always, appreciate you guys' time and service. I definitely know how hard you work and what all goes into it. I'll be as brief as possible because you've been here for a while. As you heard tonight, it's not an issue of people don't want to see this property developed. It's about what? Even the opposition, as little as it's been, has been either nothing or do residential. Everybody knows from an agricultural standpoint, the soil is a problem soil because it's not good for agriculture, but it's perfectly fine for development. As you've also heard tonight, that three of the four corners around this property have been developed and are all commercial. Like you said, five community meetings, overwhelming support, got over 484 signatures in person, the entire subdivision across from it. Everybody that's come to these meetings, another 265 online, with only 38 against. We're at a point now where, again, you just remembered in 2020, same soil, same policy, bumped up against this, we did an SP. So that's where the conversation around would you do an SP to the owner came from. I'll say this. One of the main reasons, again, not just because most of that around that area is CS or CL. In addition to that, it's the conversations around what people want to see have driven all of this. It is an overwhelming push for more commercial, not residential. The other portion is because this is next to the interstate. Remember, this area borders three counties. And it is a massive thorough through. It's 1,000-plus people every AM from as far as Paducah, Kentucky, Clarksville, Oak Grove, all passing through this corridor. This is a wholly commercial area and survives and thrives and functions off of that standpoint. So this is not adding something new, not adding something different, not adding something detrimental. The other advantage in, and focusing on the CS as it is around the other corners on this property, is the simple fact that, and I know it wasn't mentioned, but the opportunity to directly have conversation with already potential buyers who sole purpose is to do the things that the community asks for. If you guys remember, we started this pre-COVID, just slightly to the north and west, talking about Neighborhood Center and Town Center because of trying to work with policy and infield development. So this is actually, from a policy standpoint, you can still do some of those things. This is only talking about targeting something specific. And I get it. Yes, you could do an SP and you could say, hey, we want to limit X, Y, and Z. But that also limits the opportunity for those potential buyers who've already shown interest in providing those specific things, those opportunities. And one of the things that wasn't mentioned, but I'll, I'll mention, I don't know if you guys are familiar with what the Jakes used to do and who they worked for decades with. The conversation actually started because I'm trying to have renovations done on another Krogers in the district. But Krogers has shown interest in moving further up because I'm in a food desert. Remember, this area is part of a district that's 20% of Davidson County's landmass. 20%. Food desert, medical desert, housing desert. 20% of Davidson County with over a half a million acres of underdeveloped or undeveloped land, and not a single real apartment complex. This is in a major corridor next to the interstate, connecting Chatham, Robertson, Pleasant View, and passers-through every day from as far as Kentucky. So this is something, again, communities showing overwhelming support for. And I think this is the right move for us to do. We're not reinventing the wheel. Again, three corners, CS, CL predominantly. And this is what the communities ask for. And so we've tried to take our time in the last few years and find the right piece in the right place to be able to pull this off. But I mean, for me, you've not heard that kind of support in a couple of areas in my district for certain things. And when you get it, you run with it. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate it. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. And Chairman, we tried to go first with you last time, but we're going to try again. Would you like to go first, Chairman? Yeah, you want to go first?
Some of the things that are very, very troubling about this application, it's like an application for something that may or may not occur in the future. And it's, it's like, I'm going to apply for a zone change on the come. And I have a problem with that. I have a problem with it because we, as a commission, as a department, as a government, validated the policies through Nashville Next that we spent a great deal of time, effort, and community engagement in defining what these communities wanted to look like. In this case, or in any case, I think that if you apply a CS zone without some sort of development need other than of input of a few members of the community and someone who has an interest. If you think back at what we have received in the past and looking at our applications, they come in with a developer who says, I want, I've either bought this property or I want to buy this property and I have specific things that I want to do with it. Do you approve or not approve of them? And we work with those developers to make sure that they're meeting the current needs of the community. I think in this case, if it goes forward for an approval, and I have just lost a lot of sleep over this one, what we do to Nashville Next and what we do to the credibility of us in defining what the development of Nashville will be and what the community wants as expressed through Nashville Next. And I realize Nashville Next is seven, eight, nine years old and have often talked about doing a review and saying, let us look at it and see if it's still stagnant, if it still needs change. If some of these things with, need to be approved, then we can modify it or completely redo it. And I know our staff is willing to look at that in, in community engagement. But I do feel very strongly that approving an application of this type sets us back decades. It's saying that, I don't care what your policies are. I don't care what your plans are. I want to do this because I have the right as a property owner. So that, that's kind of where I'm coming from. Yes, and I'm quite familiar with Jolton. I visit it quite often. I was part of the original plan with Nashville Next that included Jolton as part of White's Creek, which was a mistake at the time. But nonetheless, it was there. And I don't think Jolton really got the attention it should have. As far as the issue of the soil, yeah, it has some issues that are there. But to me, the underlying reason this thing should not be approved is that the community has said they want it in, not in this direction at that time. Now, if they want to change that, that's fine. Now, if they want to change that, that's fine. But let's go through the process of doing that in a formal way. So I would not be for this application. Uh, I think that we could look at maybe sitting down with staff and saying, let's do an evaluation of where this community is and if it has a problem with that, or getting down to some specifics as to what commercial would be developed there. And I too am baffled at how we would apply 77 acres of land and give it a blanket CS approval. To me, that's, that's, just does not stick well. So that's my thoughts on that.
Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Commissioner Haynes. Commissioner Lawson, you could keep going. You, you're, you're on a roll.
Am I on a roll?
You were on a roll.
I, I completely agree with you. I completely agree with staff's analysis. I think trying to compare this 78 acres to SP and CL zoning across interstate on far smaller parcels is apples and oranges. Um, so I'm going to support staff's recommendation.
You know, Nashville Next was another way we said general plan. We've always had general plans. It's nothing magical about Nashville Next except that was kind of illiterative and so we called it that. But I think we have always, uh, the Metro Council hasn't always, but the commission has always or almost always for the last many years, uh, paid attention to the general plan and realizing that the council can overrule us if they get 27 votes, that's all it takes. But we can't do that. We can't start a tradition of ignoring our general plan or our, in this case, Nashville Nets. It, it has to be amended before we really should take that authority, even if we believe it was the right use. As it happens, CS zoning, um, yeah, it could take a grocery store. It could also take a lot of other uses that I would like for staff to maybe mention for just a second or two, what some of those are. CS, um, zoning, um, is it a truck stop? Is that a CS?
I do have a table.
Yeah, that was kind of.
It is pretty extensive. Um, some of it did mention that there's, um, let's see. Financial institutions, general offices, um, let's see what else? Hospitals, medical offices, nursing homes, a lot of commercial uses, of course. Um, automobile sales, bar nightclub, boat storage. It is pretty extensive. Liquor sales, mobile storage units.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, some of those might be fine and some might not be, but the fact is we, we won't, we will lose control if we approve this and I'd be, I'd be against it as former chairman eloquently pointed out we should be.
Yeah. Commissioner Haley.
Um, yeah, I'm, you know, I have, I have some troubles with it as well. Um, you know, and, and I hear the council member, I think this is a, a part of our community, a part of our city that, that does need services and, and, and does need amenities. Um, it's, it's grossly underdeveloped, but I do feel like it's, it's, especially with the significance of the size that we're looking at and, and the transitional context, that it, it is more appropriate for there to be a process that details what would come and, and allows the community to have a lot of input on what is suitable and, and honestly, what guidance and regulations can come from, from this body and others, um, based on that, on that development.
Thank you, Councilman.
Um, thank you, Chair. I mean, the, the policy issue just, I, I think cannot be overstated. Uh, when we hear so much, what we've heard recently, we hear a lot from White's Creek, but, uh, as well as we've heard a lot from folks in, um, Daniele's Bend area, a lo, a lot of parts of the county where, uh, that are generally rural. And I would describe that as a rural area when you go down the road and then you come up the ridge up into Jolton, once you get up into Jolton, it's a little bit more of a, kind of a small town feel, but that's a very rural, uh, and agricultural context. I mean, even today, um, and the policy is rural maintenance. And if we, uh, make a decision to allow commercial uses that aren't supported by rural maintenance, then that, I think legitimately does open that discussion up to all of the rural maintenance areas. And that will have huge effects for the rest of the, the rural policy area in the county. So I, I think that is a reason, I mean, just not kind of to go there. Um, as far as the question of with the neighborhood, with the rural center portion at the south and could that be expanded? I mean, I think it could, but again, we, we would just need to go through a different process. Um, if the community maybe went through a process and said, you know, that they, they're supportive of a center policy hugging White's Creek Pike itself, then that might be one discussion even then, but still like, that would be a huge, uh, center policy area if that were, even to go through the Nashville Next process, that would be a very, very, very large rural policy that still would be in the middle of, um, kind of low density, a few low density subdivisions, some wooded acreage and a lot of fields. So I, I still think that would be very much out of place at this particular location. Um, I know Mr. Jakes has done a lot of work in the community and that's admirable. I think that's why the support is there. I think people support their neighbor, right, Mr. Jakes? Um, and so the issue is that once the, the land use does not follow the person that follows the land. So once that land use is applied to that land, uh, then we may or may not have that neighbor that we, that we know that's controlling it, right? And so that, that's the issue, that we have to make a land use decision based on land use and policy and not on the person that, that happens to own the land at the moment. So for those reasons, I support staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. So we've been talking about a lot about Nashville Next. That is general plan. And I think this is the area literally working the policy, uh, for that community. Because I, I see 10 parcels and a southern two parcels, uh, 208 and 172. I believe those are the only neighborhood, T2 neighborhood, uh, center policy. And then north of eight parcels, they are T2 rural maintenance policy. So I think those reflect the community's wish. They, you know, at the time, a community thought those two parcels on the southern portion, that would be appropriate, some kind of a commercial type of, of policy because of the proximity to the interstate. So for that, I can see if supported by the community, SP with specific use, not blanketly open up 10 parcels to commercial intense, not in line with T2 maintenance policy. So I think staff analysis is right on. I always appreciate, uh, council members' reasoning and enthusiasm, but in this case, I have to disagree with, uh, their wishes and I will stick with, uh, policy and land use. So for that, you know, CS in entire, uh, property is not appropriate. I support disapproval.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Um, first, I definitely, uh, commend the applicant for the, um, community, uh, meetings. I think that whenever it's this much, 10 parcels and this much, you know, I don't think you, uh, learned it last time. You don't necessarily have the requirement to do it, but the fact that you did it and you got people coming out and emailed them at two o'clock. I mean, I really commend that and councilperson and, because, uh, that really helps with the community to at least know, even if they all said no, at least they all knew what your, your thoughts were and your plan was. So I, I really commend that. I commend that spirit of, you know, getting, you know, their input on what the area needed. Um, un, unfortunately, I, I wish you weren't so hard on the SP because I, I, I do feel like that something like that would, this is a, this is the kind of area that could really use it because you could, you can, we wouldn't have to do this blanket CS that is such a departure. And, um, you know, there, like the list said, there's so many things that could go in. I think, um, uh, councilperson said it best, uh, the land policy follows the land, not you. And, uh, if, if you, you could control it better with an SP and make it really what the, uh, all of your, uh, neighbors, you know, desired as opposed to anything on that list. So, uh, I, I, I also have to vote disapproval, but, uh, like I said, I do commend the, the thought and the process and definitely the councilperson's desire to bring needed things to this area.
Commissioner Black.
Um, really not more left to be said. I echo my fellow commissioners', um, words about just thanking the, um, the applicant for being so proactive and getting the community involved. It is helpful to hear the community's response to your efforts. Um, unfortunately, the policy isn't there. Maybe the policy could get there one day, but we don't have a, a policy change request in front of us. We just have an item that is against policy and not really in a way such as the SP to kind of more narrowly tailor the proper uses for that policy area. Um, so with that being said, I would, um, move approval of staff's recommendation of disapproval.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of disapproval, say aye. Those no, ayes have it, it's disapproved. All right, so we are now on to 41, item 41. Well, before, before we get started on item 41, I want to make sure, is there anyone in opposition on item 41? Okay, we got it, all right. Thank you. All right, Donald, are you ready?
Ready.
Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, I'm Donald Anthony with the Planning Department and this is item 41 on your agenda. The request is to rezone four parcels totaling just over one acre located at 5705 and 5707 Robertson Avenue from R8 to RM15A NS. Staff recommends approval of this request. The current zoning for the property is R8, which is a one and two family residential district with a minimum lot area of 8,000 square feet. There are currently two single-family, uh, residential units on the property. All of the adjacent parcels are also zoned R8, uh, though there are several higher density SP districts in the area. The area around the subject property is generally residential in use. There is a, an existing church on the east side of the subject property. The proposed RM15A NS zoning district would permit up to 15 residential units on this property. Uh, short-term rentals would not be permitted. The policy for the property is T4 NE or urban neighborhood evolving. The T4 NE policy is characterized in part by a diversity of housing, moderate to high density, and improved connectivity. Staff finds that the proposed RM15A NS zoning is consistent with the T4 NE policy, particularly the policy's focus on increasing housing quantity and diversity. Therefore, staff recommends approval of this request and we can answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we'll open this item for public hearing as the applicant in the room. All right, you know the drill, you have 10 minutes and we can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Michael Garrigan, 516 Heather Place. I'm an engineer with Dell and Associates and I'm representing the property owner, Mr. Ned Michaels. Uh, Mr. Michaels purchased this property in, uh, 2021 and he started working with the Neighborhood Association, uh, James Robertson, Charlotte Park Neighborhood Association, as well as Councilmember Roberts immediately. Uh, he's been working with them, I believe it's about 15 months now. Um, the discussion started right around the same time as, um, the church to the east there, uh, was purchased by an investor. And they were meeting with the Neighborhood Association as well. There were proposals, 100 units on that two acre, um, uh, vacant church at, at, at the moment. Um, and, and, and wild things like that. And, you know, the way that, uh, the discussions kind of worked in with, with the Neighborhood Association was something's going to happen with that church. It's right on White Bridge Road, one, you know, 200 feet from I-40. Um, if you turn left, you're on Bradley Parkway. So if, if you go back to that first arrow you had, Donald, you, you can, you know, see it's obviously, uh, sitting there right in between two limited access interstates. And if you turn right, you're on, you know, the major collector of White Bridge Road. Uh, so what the thought was, was that, you know, given that the church is going to redevelop someday in, in a somewhat high density, um, the Neighborhood Association, what they're comfortable with for that is around 20 units per acre with some mixed use. Problem is what they paid for the church, nobody's been able to make that make sense yet. So our thought was, okay, so that's going to be a higher density use. We'll transition this lot as an RM15 that will then step down to what's leading down to the west on Robertson, which is essentially 10 units per acre. There mostly 8,000, you know, between 7,500 and 8,000 square foot lots, which are duplex eligible, which translates to 10 units per acre. So this is kind of, was viewed by both our side as well as the Neighborhood Association as, as the bookend, you know, kind of transitioning from, you know, your, your major roads, the higher density, medium density, and then, then getting down into the neighborhood. Um, so through that process, um, lots of discussions, um, lots of ideas. Um, and, and this is where we landed. Uh, in September of last year, the, uh, James Robertson and Charlotte Park Development Committee voted to approve this. And then in a following month, in October, it was taken to the Full Neighborhood Association for a vote and then they approved. Um, so, uh, Councila Roberts is, is in favor. And I believe you have a letter of support from her as well as the president of the Neighborhood Association. And it falls in line, um, with Nashville Next and we ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll save two minutes for your rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in support?
I.
Ma'am, are you in support?
I, oh, no. Absolutely.
We have to work, it's a process. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up, state your name and address.
DeeDee Vandevort, 5515 Rome Avenue. Um, I guess my concern here is, uh, ladies and gentlemen, is that we have been rezoning and rezoning and rezoning in my neighborhood over and over and over and over because people just come in and buy this property and they decide to develop it and they're going to get the best, the most out of their buck. I have been a builder. I have run a construction company in Missouri before we moved here over 23 years ago. And, uh, when we built, we had very stringent guidelines. When I moved here to remodel a house, the guidelines were not there and I was just like, whoa. But in this case, that's what I'm seeing here where we are overcrowding this neighborhood. That corner is a very, very busy intersection. Uh, whether he knows it or not, I don't know if he lives in the area, but it, uh, I am wondering what's going to happen with that church. I look at it every day and I'm very concerned. And I think we need to stop adding more houses to the acreage that's there. We need to keep it residential. Most of the people coming in building are building homes that are actually rentals, not ownership. I have owned in this side of, uh, Charlotte Pike for over 10 years. I bought in 2012 when you could get a house for 46,000 on bid. Now, and I lived in Sylvan Park and was flooded during the two, 2010 because of groundwater in my home, not even in a flood area. So as we keep building, we are ruining the area where we have runoff. We're also overcrowding and we're not making affordable housing. I have a daughter and son-in-law living with me currently because they have master's degree. They both have jobs, but because of student debt, cannot get a home loan. These homes are not built cheaply or sold cheaply if they sell them. And if they want multi-home areas, most of those are rentals for their retirement and they're not people that live in the area. So I think we need to look at those things.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Two-minute rebuttal?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be, uh, brief. Um, I am very familiar, uh, with this area. I started working in this area, actually on that SPE, Catty, Candy Corn there, Snyder and Robertson, um, 2014, I believe. Uh, and was part of the group that went to the quarry and assisted them in getting the trucks to minimize their trips and slow down. Um, because back in 2014, it, that Robertson was a very dangerous. Because back in two thousand fourteen, it, that Robertson was a very dangerous road. And where Robertson meets White Bridge is a very congested intersection. It needs some significant improvements, and that's another kind of hot button item of that church property and what would be tacked on to any development there when it comes to extending up the turn lanes and things of that nature. We will be improving our frontage as required by all new developments. We also think this will help eliminate the possibility of four duplex lots, building four driveways will be, it will ensure the alley that's in bad shape, that's shared with the church property, gets improved to Metro standards and is utilized as the sole point of access, restricting conflict points near that intersection. And I guess that's about it. I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I don't, I didn't see the council member. Councilmember's not here. So seeing no one else waiting to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Tibbs, you haven't gone first yet. Yeah, I think this is still pretty straightforward with policy, and I support the staff recommendation.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. I didn't realize the church property was vacant. So before I realized church property.
Well, you're finished, Commissioner Johnson, I guess? No, I'm just kidding, just kidding.
So before church property was vacant, I thought it was a good transition because this area being a T four neighborhood evolving, and especially the NS designation is proposed. So that means no short-term rental. So that will be actual housing. And so I think it's a great policy, and density in that specific area is not extreme density, rather what, you know, Commissioner Henry want to say, gentle density. So for that reason, I think it's appropriate zone change. And it was mentioned affordable housing. That's the one thing we, Commissioner, do not have any control over, we cannot require. So, but we are aware of that, and I'm glad, you know, some appropriate department is working hard to create those affordable housing. So, but anyway, also, I am in support of this zone change request.
Councilman Withers.
Thank you, Chair. I think Mr. Garrigan's probably more familiar with every square inch of this county than probably anyone other than our N dot department, having worked on so much, so many projects and been to so many community meetings throughout all of my involvement in Nashville, I think. So I'm sure he's quite familiar with that intersection. I believe Mr. Garrigan indicated that you'll be at least getting the alley up to an acceptable standard. And then what about sidewalks on that side? There'll be sidewalks as well. I know that's very important in that area. So, you know, as, as for the comment about, you know, affordable housing, as Commissioner Johnston said, we can't regulate that, but adding housing inventory tends to lower housing cost overall. And I think in particular, the restriction on short-term rentals ensures that this will be housing. And, you know, frankly, even if it is used as rental property, which is fine, those neighbors who would live there are still residents and neighbors of the community too. So that is an important thing to continue to add to our neighborhoods. So I think this is appropriate for a neighborhood-evolving policy area, and I'm in support of the staff recommendation.
Commissioner Henley.
Thank you, Chair. I will say I've enjoyed hearing gentle density and affordable housing already, so I won't have to say those, but I'm, I'm very excited about this plan. I think, you know, adding more housing, doing it where possible, and making sure that we're thoughtful about the impact that that density does have. I think I heard that in the, in the comments that were made. The one question I did have, I think was addressed in the rebuttal already, which was, you know, as you add more density, you think about these units, that intersection, but it seems like, you know, there's going to be an effort to make the access not be right in the front and kind of further complicate what I, what I know is already a pretty busy road. So that, that actually satisfied me a little bit more in, in what I was expecting from the, from the proposal. And then I think, you know, trusting staff in the conversation that they already had with the developer, I'm happy with it.
Commissioner Clifton.
I agree with what Spence said. I don't have anything to add.
Commissioner Haynes. Chairman. Commissioner Black's here. But she said it's fine, so what is?
There's one thing I wanted to say.
Oh, yes, Commissioner Black.
Let me talk. I am very empathetic to the neighbor, and I do understand feeling like there's constant zoning, and we have a zone here. And so if you want to buy a property, then do it in, you know, within the confines of the existing zone. I think this area is a little different because it's in a neighborhood-evolving policy. And so, I mean, it's not something that is against the plan. It's not something that's not been anticipated to eventually happen. But I do, I do want to say that I do understand your concerns and maybe to lesser extent frustration.
And so now we're ready for a motion, Chairman. Oh, there's been proper motion to approve. Is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, staff's recommendation to approve. Passes. So that leads us to our last part of the meeting. Under Other Business, we are very excited about Todd, obviously, and so you'll, we'll be, I don't know, well, the director will give us an update during her report on that. Next is Historic. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, I am very excited to announce Historic Zoning Commission will be introducing annual recognition of neighborhood preservation leader. As you know, we are preserving, you know, while we are, we have lots of development pressure about Historic Zoning Commission is really focusing on preservation of the neighborhood. So to do that, there are so many neighborhood leaders working hard behind the scene. So we decided it would be so nice to honor their hard work and volunteer work annually, so we will be introducing those program.
Thank you. Parks, Commissioner Haynes.
We held the last meeting for Warf Park Design, so we will be taking all that feedback and deciding on a path to present to the council. So that's very exciting.
Excellent. All right, Executive Committee Report, I guess, so this would probably be a good place to talk about the general plan or Nashville Next. So we, there's been some folks asking about an update. There's been some folks running for council asking about, you know, where we are in that process. And I think for us, our process that we've done is to, is always based on fact and getting information and for the commissioners to make a decision based on more input and kind of where we are like. So I would say, obviously, y'all know that Nashville Next is not a stagnant document. It's had a lot of changes over the last eight years. So I think it's important for us to get some information on how many times it's changed, what areas have changed, and go from there. And so our normal process is to do a workshop, Chairman, and I know you all love more meetings, but I think at this point, it's important for us to have talked to the director, and so she's going to give us a little update on kind of where we are in that process and kind of, and there's been some work that's already started. So Director, you want to give us the update so the commissioners know kind of our direction?
Sure, thank you. And if Councilmember Withers wants to add any daylight on this also, that's great. Within the last year, Councilwoman Gamble and Councilmember Withers ended up as a, I don't remember if it was a cosponsoring effort or what have you, but she, she formally asked the Planning Department to come to council and give an update as to whether we thought a rewrite or revisit or an update or something to Nashville Next would be appropriate. And so we spent some time working with her and Councilmember Withers. And what, what we came to was a process with council where we invited members to let us know, as well as communities, if there are parts of the community that they would like to update. And so that, there was a month-long period where we got lots of feedback. And so ultimately, we landed, and it won't be exactly fifteen, but it was somewhere in the realm of fifteen areas of the county where either council members or community members said, we want you to come out and do some work. And so we are just going through a process of going through each one of those. We have community meetings that we anticipate doing. All this will happen this year. And so I would be happy, Chair, if it would be appropriate to have a work session and talk about what those items are and what we think the scope of the work might look like. That's not to suggest that some broader effort isn't appropriate, but I would want to just reassure you that we acknowledge that there are some parts of the county, Jolton, for example, that may need, you know, more scrutiny for whatever reason. There are some parts of the county that are growing really fast or other parts of the county where maybe folks feel like they need another look. And so we're open to coming up with a transparent process and working through that with your support. So thank you, Chair, for giving me the opportunity to say that and look forward to a work session.
Well, and Commissioners, I, I charge you to, to review the document again and look over some things. And if, look, if you think, we, we'll discuss this in the workshop, and if we get to a point where we think we need an overall review with the director, I mean, we're always willing to do it. And the good thing is, we're starting to staff up. We have our number two person that's going to come in and help, and this might be a good, good project for him. No, I'm just, I don't assign staff duties. But I want you guys to know, I want, I want the commission to know that, that I, I charge you, like, if you think that something is outdated, we need to look at it. And so I think having the workshop, which we already have one workshop scheduled, and that we're going to talk about downtown code, tree ordinance, and some other things. So this will be probably our next thing to discuss. And so I charge the commission and Commissioners and anyone listening, if you think something's outdated. I've had a few, so this is what caused me a little bit of consternation or concern is I've had a few council candidates, you know, race coming up, and they're like, you know, that document hasn't been updated in, you know, a long time. And I'm like, well, it's not a stagnant, stagnant document. So I think, though, we all need to look at it and see if there's outdated pieces of it, and then we'll talk about it in the workshop. And so Chairman, I appreciate all of the discussion on this because it's starting to kind of be a, you know, a candidate, council candidate talking point, and I want to make sure that, you know, that we address the council. Because we work so closely with the council. I mean, we're, we're really tied at the hip. So I want to thank Councilman Withers for working with us on that. So always been very helpful and really appreciate that. That's all I have. Well, please come to the next workshop. We'll get this scheduled. Kelly will send out, we'll send out a time when we can all meet, and we'll get that on the books, so.
So just to clarify, the next work session is on the twenty-fourth. Lisa, is that correct? And it's on trees and downtown code. And then we will immediately get the Nashville Next work session scheduled so we can talk about what we're, we've done with council and also get some more feedback from each of you. So thank you, Chair.
Excellent. All right, anything else, Director? Your Director's report?
Just one thing. You'll find at your desk a letter from me to you. It's the twenty-twenty-two year-end report, and it's, it talks about the accomplishments that we've made as a department, and I will email a copy to you as well. There's plenty for us to work on as well, but I also think it's good to celebrate and honor the work of the staff. We've had a lot of great, great accomplishments, and so I appreciate all of your support and your work and volunteerism. So thank you.
It's a beautiful document.
Frame it, read it, love it, yeah.
Excellent. And Councilman, your last one, legislative update. Nothing for you. Seeing no other business, do I hear motion adjourned? Or adjourned?